All right, let's get things started. It's four thirty to begin our council work session. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Shimp.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt. Mrs. Jewen.
Here. Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Mayor.
Oppose? Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I want to note and note in the record that I am declaring that I have duly defined by state law and our Code of Ordinance's conflict of interest regarding the second item on this agenda having to do with the public market proposals. My conflict of interest is that I have a familial relationship with one of the three respective proposers, and therefore illegally removed from participation in discussion of that matter, debate on that, any decision-making on that, both now in this work session and in any future vote. And I want to note that according to state law, when I have a duly recognized and declared conflict of interest, that any vote that is taken on that matter in a council of seven will be reduced to a council of six as my vote is excluded, not counted as a yea or a nay, but as just, it's absent. There's only six to vote on that at that point, Mr. Mayor.
That was one of the most detailed abstentions I've ever heard. I don't even think Congress goes that far, so.
Good job, man.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Morrissey. Without further ado, four thirty is discussion regarding the use of fireworks on July fourth. Councilman Amos.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we voted, as you know, we voted to ban fireworks within the city, and I have had constituents asking about reinstating at least one day of fireworks, simply based off the fact that they're sold in the community and they do want to shoot them off. And I told those individuals that I would bring it forward again, and depending on what the council decides, we'll just kind of go from there.
Of course, we don't decide here, we'll discuss it, but can you, you said July fourth, is that all day?
Yes. My proposal would be the July fourth timeframe from, I believe it's nine in the morning till eleven at night, and I think that correlates with what the state's timeframes are. But that's what I'm requesting is a one day. I don't know if the other council members have something they want to add to it or not, but that is the request that I am making.
Let me get this right, July fourth, nine AM to eleven PM.
Which is a Wednesday.
What, July fourth? So, this would, okay, and according to the timeframes that the state has, the parameters of the state.
The parameters that the state has set up, those, that timeframe, and I believe it is nine to eleven. I had Kelly check it, and I believe that's what the timeframe was.
Yep, that's a timeframe.
Okay, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You can, what is the actual timeframe as far as days go allowed by the state?
Oh, good question.
What's the summer period? How long is that period of time that the state allows?
About twenty days. Anyone remember? Was it June twentieth through July fif-
Patrillor Far Chief, there's a longer period of time for the, for the sales of fireworks, basically from the start of June to just past the July fourth timeframe. And some cities have chosen to just let use during the whole time. If you remember last year in seventeen, we chose to do a five-day window, if I remember right. That was our recommendation as the fire department. And there was some discussion on trying to match up with other communities around us. That was a fairly big deal to the council at the time.
Mr. Mayor, so do, does the city currently, do they regulate anything on the sale of fireworks?
No, that was the state.
But we, but we didn't make that window smaller or anything like that?
No, we're, we're not in, that local control's not given to us to restrict the days of sale. But either Kelly or Noel could talk to the restrictions for where they can be sold. I think they're in industrial areas only, if I remember right.
Yeah, and like I said, we didn't have a choice.
Right, okay.
Choice in this, but we did have a choice for the timeframe to be able to allow them to be shot off here.
Mr. Mayor.
You done, sir?
And just to that, so the, the state allowing them to shoot off, is that, is that shorter than the, the sale? Because if I remember right, the sale was like June first to July fifth.
Yeah, I'd have to double-check, I'd have to double-check on that, for sure.
That window's short, okay, just.
I'd have to double-check on that to be sure, which I can, and get back to you on that.
Okay.
Mr. Jacobs.
Chief Trillor, how many complaints did we have on fireworks in our first year out?
For the fire department itself, we responded to no calls related to fireworks. I believe Chief Tralca can answer on PD's side. If I remember right, it was over eight hundred. On that note, we also did not have any fires attributed to fireworks last year or any ambulance transports.
The Tralca Police Chief, I believe it was right around eight hundred, and we ended up issuing right around twenty citations.
Yeah, and it took a considerable amount of public education to, to even help try to limit that number, but there were a lot of illegally shot off days where people were shooting them off, if I'm not mistaken.
There were, yes, even after the Fourth of July.
All right, so we had Mr. Shimp, Mr. Jacobs, any?
I don't have anything else, Mayor, other than, I understand the eight hundred complaints. I don't know if it was people calling more than one time or whatever it was, but I do have constituents that really have the desire to, on the Fourth of July, be able to utilize fireworks.
Chief, I want to ask one more question to Trillor. The process, you know, there was, I don't think we had the ability to offer permits to folks. You had folks that were doing the really big fireworks shows that went through all the training, and they're able to be able to release fireworks. But as far as folks underneath that, that wanted to have an opportunity, we, is there a really good vehicle on the state level to, for folks to be able to, to do this, or?
As in to get a permit or to get training? The answer's no. There's, there's no training provided to anybody that I'm aware of in this area in regards to the safe use of fireworks, if I'm understanding your question right. We have zero issue with permitted fireworks within the city. Trained professionals, they're under permit. We do go out and check their fallout area, and that's the big deal with an aerial device like fireworks, is the fallout of the embers that could potentially start fires. So there's really no good avenue to control the use of fireworks by the general population, if you will.
So, okay, so we, 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 Councilman Schmidt, did you have any questions about the fireworks?
No, I didn't, thanks.
Councilman Morrissey?
No, no, Mr. Mayor.
So, I assume you would want this to go.
Yes, sir.
To this, do we need somebody to second?
You can just put it on the agenda.
Okay.
For next Monday.
So, really simple and clear, July fourth only. You said nine AM to eleven PM. Period.
Period. Yes.
Counsel okay with?
I haven't looked.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would that be on a continuing basis?
What you mean, like every year or just examine it this year, or what?
Yes, it, would it be every year or just a trial period for this July fourth?
Yep, yep, I think that's fine. I guess what we did earlier was a trial basis, too. So, so yeah, yes, sir.
Sorry, I was late. Do we know for sure what the other communities are doing, Cedar Falls and Evansdale specifically?
Cedar Falls is complete ban. Evansdale tried to mirror theirs after our original five days. Did they change theirs to go, so they tried to mirror what we did? But Cedar Falls is a complete ban.
And the one day or the two chiefs, is that what they favor also? I'm sorry, I missed your comment, so I apologize for that. Traffic is becoming more an issue every day in town. Which is a good thing, yeah, that's a good thing.
I support regulation over a ban. So one day, sure, yes, sir.
Would you prefer three? Would you prefer five?
Uh, whatever the council decides, we will enforce.
On the fire side, we, I think we got lucky last year. We didn't have any injuries or any fires caused by it. Had we had some of that go on, the basis might be to say to ban it. I do know the discussion this council previous, or most of you, was that we want to try to align with our, with other cities in the area. All the large cities in Iowa that I'm aware of have chosen to go to complete ban because of the complaints. It's mostly geared towards, obviously, PD handling them. Cedar Falls did, or excuse me, Cedar Rapids did have one or two fires attributed to fireworks use, but that wasn't the case in our community.
Some of the.
So, basically, we're okay with one day if you, if you choose to go to one day.
Some of the other cities did outright ban some of the larger cities.
Yeah, it's my understanding, all of the large cities have banned. Sioux City for sure, Cedar Rapids for sure, Iowa City for sure, and Des Moines for sure. Little uncertain about Davenport, but Dubuque is banned all use within city limits.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I can just add, one of the things I said during the campaign, kind of my idea on it, on it was that this year would be a bad example with it being on Wednesday, but last year, July fourth fell on Tuesday. So, I kind of thought there was no reason for folks to be shooting fireworks off at eleven o'clock at night that Tuesday, because most folks are going back to work the following Wednesday. So, my idea was actually to, for that previous weekend, wherever it falls, allow for two days for that weekend, and kind of condensed hours compared to nine to eleven. So, if you want to look at that, I would be in favor of something like that, too. Does that make sense, kind of?
So the weekend prior?
Before or after, depending when the fourth fell.
Mr. Mayor, can I make comment? I would think you should consider a rain issue. If people are expecting to shoot and they purchase these fireworks with the hopes of shooting them on the fourth, and you have a poor weather day on the fourth, I think these people are, the people that purchase them will want an opportunity to use them. So I would think you should consider a rain, I don't know, one or two days if you're going that way, but just a comment.
And it makes sense to me, Mr. Mayor, if we're going to have a rain day, that it would be the Saturday afterwards. So then you can get that weekend in, you're talking about it.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to either, any of these ideas.
So if the, so if the Fourth of July is on a Monday.
It's on a Wednesday.
I'm just, but we're talking about, so if it's on a Monday, we would say you can shoot them off on the tenth?
The Saturday, Sunday prior to?
Or after, because you wouldn't know if it's a rain day until the day it's happening.
If it was on a Monday or a Tuesday, do it the weekend prior, if it was.
So you're not, you're not talking about rain?
No, I'm not, I wasn't.
You're on two different conversations.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were still talking about rain.
No.
No, no, I'm sorry.
The chief, the chief was, yeah.
That's a good, I think that's a good point, though. He brings it up.
I do, too.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we could just back up for a second, we're kind of opening up this can of worms again, but as long as we're doing that, you know, it sounds like some are in favor, but, you know, as a matter of fact, if we do fireworks, there is additional cost to the city, because I, you know we're going to have more fire and police hours spent on this. There's also a concern of our veterans that don't appreciate, some of our veterans do not appreciate the firework availability, and that does cause some problems. There's also problems with flat-out litter. You know, a lot of folks that shoot off the legal stuff, the simple stuff like a bottle rocket, do you have any intention of picking that up? How do you know where it goes? You know, I found several on my roof of my house this year when I was inspecting my roof. So, there's a lot of issues, and there's, and I found there's many more people that do not want fireworks than the select few that might want those. So I think we had to look at the whole and base our decision on that rather than a few people that do want fireworks.
So, yeah, I think we're.
Mr. Mayor, I would just, in, in response to Mr. Jacobs, I appreciate that, and I do think there's more opposed to it. But I think doing a one-day, allow to have the fireworks on one day is a good compromise. And I like the idea that if it is a rain day, then they could, we could write it in that the following Saturday would be the replacement date.
Mr. Chief Trillor.
Just a comment to Mr. Shimp, I just had the Fire Marshal look it up. It is June first through July eighth. So that would be the state period that use and sale is allowed. Cities are allowed to restrict the use down to total ban. Cities are not allowed to reduce down the timeframe that fireworks can be sold.
Very good, thank you.
All right, seems like we're back where we were at several months ago. So if, I need something to put on the agenda, if you want, you know, we, you can't vote now, but do you want a hard date of July fourth and with a, the next day? If it's rain, you can shoot them off the next day or the Saturday or two days or?
Mr. Mayor, my proposal would be the one day, and then the following Saturday, if there is a rain day on the Fourth of July. That way, the people that are working and things like that might not have an issue. I suspect that we're still going to be hearing fireworks going off and everything on those other days, and I hope that's not the case. But for me, one day, rain day, the following Saturday.
If it rains before nine o'clock AM?
And how much rain?
How much rain, precipitation?
We don't want to open up more cans of worms.
But just put it at the discretion of the mayor.
It's up to them.
The mayor can determine a rain date.
What if it sprinkles?
Yeah, what if it sprinkles?
So, so, so we'll write up something for July fourth with rain consideration as an option. All right, all right, thank you. Next, we have a discussion for the public market requests or the RFP process. There seemed to be a little confusion about that, so.
I'm going to hang up on Mr. Morrissey here. Goodbye, Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so we need to move forward and bring a, we have a process, but we need to talk about how you want to bring this to the council. So, I think Noel and Adrian can identify the process that was approved by council.
Yes, Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So we went out with a request for proposal that the council had approved us to go out with. We were very fortunate to receive three very good proposals. Adrian is working with Chris right now to go ahead and go through the process. Essentially, we worked with what we've done for a lot of the other downtown projects. We worked with the Waterloo Development Corporation and put together what they call a project management team that did a review of the proposals, basically discussing them in a meeting with, and we had representatives there from the WDC, from city staff, as well as Main Street and the Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau, and then our downtown consulting group, Bandawall and Associates, were all there. Adrian's going to go through that process that we did for the review with you on the PowerPoint.
That is a really colorful picture. Everything should be like that.
Isn't that pretty?
Bright and springy.
Good afternoon, Adrian Miller, Economic Development Specialist for the City of Waterloo. As Noel said, we began this process, I'll give you a little bit of history on the public market. It was renovated from a former lawn care building through the gaming, and the funding for that was through a gaming grant, which WDC or Waterloo Development Corporation assisted with, and also a million-dollar state community attractions and tourism grant. We entered into a five-year lease agreement for the public market to be ran as a grocery slash restaurant in 2011, and we did not renew that lease once that was up. The requests for proposals for the public market actually were sent out in January twenty-ninth of this year. They were due back to the Planning and Zoning Department on March seventh. They were sent out to a number of different entities who had expressed, or people who have had expressed interest in the public market for their projects, and then also to a number of commercial realtors in the area. The review for the proposals after they were in on that March seventh were, they were reviewed from representatives from the City of Waterloo, Waterloo Development Corporation, Main Street Waterloo, Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance were also all involved with that to make a recommendation to city council today. The criteria that we looked at during that review process was the project understanding, and just that the complete information was included with all of the requests or their proposals, the business experience and the staff and the history that the individuals or entities had with the, for the proposals, if they've had recent projects or performance at other locations, downtown compatibility of the projects or proposals, and then also the financial capability incentives requested for each proposal. The first proposal that we'll actually go through is Waterloo Bicycle Works. This is just kind of a synopsis of what their proposal had. I believe you all had access to their proposals through the Nova system. So, I'll try to briefly go through these. This is a bike, bicycle shop, cafe, deli, and clothing store. They proposed to be open by May first. They're self-financed. They were going to throw in about ten to fifteen thousand dollars in new equipment, signage, counters, work benches, paint fixtures, et cetera, into the building. First year of rent, they would like waived with annual review after that, and then seventy percent tax rebate on property taxes for the first three years. First rate of refusal for the city, or with the city if we were to sell the building, and would like to, would like portable bollards located near the curb cuts, because they would like to utilize that space for bike testing and whatnot. They would create three full-time positions and one part-time position for the bike works, and then also one full-time position plus one part-time position for the deli-cafe area. And they would bring an established business to Waterloo, which is Raygun. The, that would be the clothing accessory store, or portion of it. They would create a new business with a cafe, and they would expand their existing business that's located downtown. They proposed to be open seven days a week and allow for the use of restrooms during expo grounds uses. So, for instance, during farmer's market. They also would like to have different bicycling events at the expo as well. The next one would be Verve, which is a kombucha, I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly, and cold brew coffee bistro. Their estimated opening date would be April night, 2019. An hour of operations would be Tuesday through Saturday, approximately lunch and dinner times. They would be manufacturing the kombucha for sales across the state. And they do have a Midwest One conditionally-approved funds for the equipment and build out of the project, for their project. They requested TIF, and they indicated chirp within the proposal, but they actually met KIRA financing, or I guess grants from the city. And they also actually would like seventy percent property tax rebates for ten years on all added value for the building. The equipment cost of the proposal was three hundred and seventy-five thousand, with an interior remodel cost of approximately two hundred thousand. Rent-free use of expo grounds for twelve years for the duration of the lease for music and food events, and then a fifty thousand dollar grant from the city. They also would like transfer of all ownership of the equipment and furniture currently inside the public market building, and then expo grounds and bathrooms would be available during farmer market, farmer's market use. Four full-time jobs, positions, and six part-time positions were going to be available with this proposal. Increase of value was estimated at two hundred thousand, and bringing it back onto the tax roll and making the building energy efficient was another item that they proposed to do. Their lease rates are also listed as noted. And the last proposal that we received was Lark Brewing. Obviously, it's a brewing, dining, tasting room. Opening, they would like to open as soon as possible. Financing provided by the owners of Lark, and they had one to three private investors for the proposal. They also requested KIRA and TIF incentives, and they would like up to fifty thousand dollars for new signage and plumbing for their project. Renovations would cost approximately a hundred thousand. Two hundred and fifty thousand in brewery and restaurant equipment would be brought in, a hundred thousand in kegging equipment, and the total estimated investment would be five hundred thousand for their project. Lark would also pay for all building maintenance and insurance during lease terms. Lark would pay for all the tenant improvements for the building at no cost of the city. And the city would provide outside property maintenance, and they would agree to sell the building to Lark Brewing after the tenth year or sooner. And then the city would also pay for any additional grease trap requirements due by city code. City would also be responsible for sanitary sewer and property and underbuilding. They would also employ approximately fifty individuals in downtown and be a destination for many who would like to craft breweries and, as well as be a complement to existing establishments downtown. They would also include a barbecue-themed restaurant with their proposal, and then their lease rates are as noted as well. The recommendation that came out of the group with the Waterloo Development Corporation and others noted was actually Verve. We had a very good discussion on every single proposal. It was kind of, it was definitely a tough decision to come to, and we definitely liked to see all of them downtown. And the reasoning behind that recommendation was that it was an established performance in downtown Waterloo for the individuals that had the proposal, and they were progressive proposal or product. It's kind of a newer upcoming product that is gaining popularity as we speak. So, they had finances in place, they had a strong team of investors. They were suitable use for the space we fought, and they were, had very strong lease rates, and they were compatible to the existing uses in downtown. And I think that was all that I had for.
All right, so I think the thing, I think the thing to, thank you. Thing to understand is, we had three very good proposals, and absolutely grateful for folks to want to invest and continue to invest in downtown Waterloo. So that was the screening process, that's what went through. My question to all of you is, because we've had questions from council about this, is that was a recommendation, and according to the process, that was going to be placed on the agenda to approve by council. But I've heard that they wanted presentations, or, so I'm asking all of you, how do you want this to come to you?
Mr. Mayor, I just want some clarification, I guess. Maybe I missed it in the first couple of slides. I, I don't know, because this is the first time I've seen this slideshow. But, so that building is in the downtown TIF, correct? It is, okay. And so, what, the city owns the entire building and everything in it currently, at this point, right?
Pretty much. Yeah, and from the one million dollars that the WDC received, too.
Okay. And so, what, I guess we're trying to, we're trying to lease it to one of these folks, right? Okay, just so I understand that further.
Are you done, Chris?
I am, I yield.
Mr. Jacobs.
Mr. Mayor, I was just hoping that we could get the three candidates to just pitch their own vision and project. I think that would be beneficial and interesting, so we can kind of get their flavor and how they're going to actually put this together. That might add a lot of information to us. It's, I think that's better than just looking at a PowerPoint, in my opinion, but that's what I was hoping we could maybe look at doing.
All right, Mr..
Well, I guess, and like Councilman Shimp, I was kind of having a hard time keeping up. So, you're saying the Verve, Verve proposal was more aggressive from a financial standpoint?
That was one thing that, yes, they looked at, that it was a very aggressive financially.
I mean, I, I'm sure I could compare that if I had those slides, but I don't.
I'm sure I could compare that if I had those slides, but I don't, so I probably didn't, so I can't. Maybe I do.
Didn't everybody get a count of the other proposals?
No, can you talk about, can you talk about that, please?
Yeah, I don't have the comparable sheet in front of me, but there were some, they were very comparable in in the lease rates that they'd be paying. Um there were some difference, you know, slight differences in how much per year, but it was, it came out very close. Both of both of the uh the Lark and the uh um the Verve one had asked for a grant um which we discussed a little bit about. We could potentially, if the city didn't have the funds to do that, to to make, take that as a change in in how the lease was set up. Um so maybe give them more of a lease break instead of a grant. Um so I think there's some negotiations that can be had um with any of the proposals and still make them work.
And and so again, running on the slides, there was a, it sounded like there was a vetting of the investors. Is that correct? Because it seems like in the past, we've kind of asked for that. Uh I don't know that we've been told.
There was a, there was a financial statement asked for in the request for proposal process to basically say, do you have, and so they would have a letter of interest from a bank saying that they have backing to do it.
Okay, well, I think the slide said the investors had been, I forget the term, but it sounded to me like somebody knew who the investors were and they're knew their financial situation. Is that what I saw or is that not what I saw?
I'd have to go back and look.
There was one um proposal that had one to three investors potentially listed, so.
And I thought it was specifically again, Verve, that it made that reference that just kind of surprised me. I'm not, I'm not arguing with anybody.
No, Verve lists out um I believe Dave Morgan and Brent Dolestrom along with Andy and um not sure, I can't remember if there were.
Well, and I'm not necessarily looking for names. I just, I just wanted to follow the process again because this committee uh who is this committee and who's on this committee?
They just gave a uh update and we also invited two council members.
I was invited, I was there.
Okay, and I believe Councilman Jacobs was invited but was not able to make it, right?
I mean, this is a, this is a uh like a Main Street?
It was Main, Main Street, so Tavis Hall, um representative from Main Street.
Oh, actually, he was Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yeah, whatever it was. Um and also it is the, was it the DBMT or the PMT?
It was the PMT meeting for the Waterloo Development Corporation.
So and I invited two council members to participate to just at least would have let down to have something come to the council. So my question, that's why my question to all of you, do you, I was hearing presentations. Um the only concern I would have about presentations, when the RFP was submitted, do we work from the information of the RFP since that was the timeframe that was get it given to given to 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 have it? Or do we allow other information to be presented to you that maybe wasn't clarified in the beginning? For instance, just say um
Police rate.
Yeah, yeah, uh to be able to change that or do we go on what we had at the time?
And that's all public information now, correct? Yeah, so I don't think that ought to be re-bid. I think, yeah, I I think we should go with the numbers they've got, but then let them make their presentation. And I'd like to talk more about TIF on an existing building and our ability to sell that building and all that kind of stuff, but we can talk about that later.
So you want, so am I hearing?
I'd like a presentation.
You want presentations from each of the?
I kind of have fallen what Mr. Schmidt's saying too with the the TIF and everything. I'm, that's where I'm getting a little confused here.
I don't need that on existing, so I thought that was typically on new.
Yeah, that's what I'm
No, I'm looking at you and I'm saying that, so I'm sorry.
What was the question?
About putting TIF on a exist- I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead, sir.
Well, just the the question of TIF and KIRA and things like that on an existing building that the city owns. I mean, it seems like, I thought we already used that up when the building was built to begin with. Can we go back and do it again?
This is an exempt property. We'll have to see exactly how.
Excuse me, there's a whole lot of business people with empty buildings who would love to know that.
Since it's an existing building and it's exempt now, it's not paying any taxes, so we have to look at exactly how that is impacted by the base and all that to to be able to give that added value, that new created taxable value in there for incentives.
All right, thank you.
That that was something that was discussed at the meeting about the rent, the rent lease rates being at least something equal to what they'd be paying in a private one as well.
All right, yes, ma'am.
So what you're saying is there's a chance we can't give them any TIF money?
There's, all the proposals are looking to make improvements to the building, so there'll definitely be some kind of an increase in value as we talk to the assessor's office about it. So there'll be some kind of an incentive that we could, we could potentially give through the cure of the TIF.
So we will have um
If you'd like, we could set a work session for next week. I would recommend we probably need to have about seventy-five minutes. That would give them fifteen minutes each for presentations and then ten minutes for questions after each one.
And uh part of the parameters is to present what you gave.
I I don't think we should allow them to change that.
Okay.
I think that'd be fair. I agree.
All right, and then from there we'll have
From there, what we would need then at the end of the work session would be a recommendation from council who to move ahead with to formally formally draft a lease to put on council agenda the week following. So so how would we do that? I mean, what do we go around and see what, what's everybody, everybody's number one is or I guess?
That is why we
Discussion.
That's why we All right, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we got our marching orders. Um if uh no other comment, um I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion to be made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned.
Call the meeting of the Finance Committee to order. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. June?
Here.
As for a motion to approve the agenda and minutes of April sixteen?
Madam Chairperson?
To approve the agenda and minutes of April sixteen, twenty eighteen as proposed.
Second.
All, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, terrific. Um under travel requests, I'm gonna ask for
Madam, Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd just like to uh do that one uh due to the uh communication here, if Bruce would be willing to take the pre-ots over a thousand.
That would be my suggestion as well. So, Mr. Morrissey, would you take travel requests, please?
Uh travel request is for uh Patrol Officer Payne for a, the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, ILEA force in Johnston, Iowa from April twenty-ninth through August fifteenth of this year with the amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Uh Madam Chairperson, uh we're also gonna amend that one, are we?
Um actually, I apologize. Um just before the meeting started, we got clarification on that amendment. It does actually just need to be um for Officer Payne. There was a typo in there that had Thomas in there, so, just Payne.
Discussion, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye.
So, okay, so Officer Thomas was taken off that, correct?
Yep, correct. It's just for Officer Payne.
Okay, okay.
I'm going to ask Mr. Jacobs if he would take the lengthy list of pre-oths.
Madam Chairperson, pre-othsation to spend over one thousand dollars. Community development, five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to purchase a Ryco MPC four five zero four EX copier with a five-year service agreement. Culture and arts, not to exceed three thousand dollars for a climate-controlled storage exhibition of artworks by Haitian artist Pascal Monin. Engineering, seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the expenditure to review the CLOMIR submitted to the National Flood Insurance Program by ECOM on behalf of the city. Fire Department, two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, annual support renewal for the firehouse software. Fire Department, seventeen hundred twenty-nine dollars for the biannual cardio pulmonary examinations. Garage, fifteen hundred fifteen dollars plus twenty-five dollars shipping and handling for the dual-channel controller and internal sensor. Leisure Services, fifteen thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars for sidewalk and dock installation. Leisure Services, twenty-one hundred thirteen dollars eighty cents. Lifeguard suits for twenty-eighteen indoor and outdoor pool staff, whistles and breakaway lanyards. Leisure Services, two thousand one hundred forty-two dollars ninety-nine cents for a sound system for the spin room. MIS Department, sixteen hundred fourteen dollars eighteen cents for annual renewal of Adobe Creative Cloud software. Planning, two thousand three hundred ninety dollars for the new Ryco printer. Police, four thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars forty-two cents. Professional liability insurance for the Tri-County Drug Task Force. Sewer Department, two thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars plus three hundred dollars shipping and handling to purchase the Fairbanks Morse pump repair parts and labor for the Douglas lift station. Traffic Operations, six thousand five hundred seventy dollars. Purchase six traffic signal heads with backplates to be installed at Airline Highway and Wagner Road. Traffic Operations, six thousand dollars. Installation of span wire system for temporary signals to Airline Highway and Wagner Road. In Traffic Operations, thirty-eight thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars ninety cents for the purchase of eighteen fifty-five gallon drums of white fast dry paint, thirty-five fifty-five gallon drums of yellow fast dry paint and seven hundred and fifty fifty-pound bags of beads reflectorized spears.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem? Or no, Madam Chairwoman, that's right. Have a question about number nine and it's more of just a curiosity. Um how do you not meet the standards for swimsuits? Because I see on the bid sheet, it said that they didn't meet standards.
Yes, Mr. Hudding, would you like to address that for us, please?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Um they just put some specifications out there. To be honest with you, I didn't review those in detail. Mark Gallagher would have set those. I can check with him and get back with you tomorrow to see what exactly was not acceptable.
I was just reading through it and it actually made me kind of giggle because I thought, well, there's no transmission in any of those.
I would not.
It's just a swimsuit, so I thought I would ask.
Well, I'm sorry, I can't answer that, but I I will get an answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Um I'm sorry, Mr. Jacobs, you have done yeoman service, but I'm gonna ask you to also take the budget line items to be amended.
Um Madam Chairperson, some budget line items to be amended tonight. Approve the budget amendment of the Tri-County Forfeiters Project to use revenue received in excess of the amount budgeted to fund additional expenses in the amount of thirty thousand dollars as submitted by our police department. To approve the project budget amendment for the Waterloo HTO Lou project to budget to use restricted revenue received in the prior fiscal year for related expenses paid in the current fiscal year in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars as submitted by the Finance Department. Approve the budget amendment to budget for insurance refunds received in related expenses in the amount of five hundred ninety thousand dollars as submitted by the Finance Department. Approve the budget amendment to use one hundred sixteen thousand dollars in fund balance for additional sidewalk expenses paid under the sidewalk assessment repair contract during the current fiscal year as submitted by the Finance Department. And lastly, to approve the budget amendment to budget for the refunding bond issue that is expected to be sold this spring in the total amount of three million five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, including the portion attributed to sewer uses.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, for bills payment as in in the accounts payable report dated April thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, received, placed on file and forward to full council, bill amount of two million seven hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Is there a second? Okay, discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hey, a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Clerk, could you read, please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schimpf?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. June?
Here.
All right, thank you. Let me see, if you will, please join me in a moment of silence. Uh if you would, please stand and um once again, please remember uh the Greenlee family and your thoughts and prayers this evening. All right, thank you. Uh the pledge this evening will be led by myself. Uh please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended and I would um direct everyone to the public meetings, public hearings, number five. The language where it starts motion to award, we would change that to resolution approving award of bid to Community Chevrolet of Cedar Falls. It is a minor change, but an important one. So if we would change the agenda as amended, the minutes of April sixteenth, regular session and um as proposed.
Second. Was there one more?
No, yeah, there's nothing else there.
Okay, disregard, okay. All right, uh so that amendment has been made uh with the second. Uh all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh we have
Hold on. Mr. Morrissey, are you in favor of approving the agenda as amended and the minutes?
Ye- yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Uh we have a number of proclamations this evening. Um number one is Bike Month, so if I could call up uh Eric Penning, uh Mike Knapp, uh if you would please come up and join me, that would be great.
Mike's not here, but I'm taking his place today.
Who who's taking his place?
My name's Darren Bryden.
All right.
You think?
All right, so um City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas Waterloo has been designated a bike-friendly community, a complete streets community and has adopted the City of Waterloo Bicycle Master Plan. Whereas the City of Waterloo in cooperation with surrounding Cedar Valley communities maintains a beautiful trail system. And whereas Cedar Valley Cyclists is an active part of our growing community of bicycle enthusiasts. And whereas in nineteen fifty-six, the League League of American Wheelmen designated the month as May as National Bicycle Month. And whereas bicycling is not only a recreational activity, but also an aerobic exercise leading to greater fitness and health as well as an energy-saving, economical, environmentally-friendly method of transportation. Now, therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim Mayor two thou- May two thousand and eighteen as Bike Month, May ninth, two thousand and eighteenth as Bike to School Day, May fourteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen as Bike to Work Week, May sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen as Ride of Silence Day and May eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen as Bike to Work Day. So in Waterloo, I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and participate in bicycling activities for recreation, transportation, fitness and improve health during the month of May. So gentlemen, thank you for being with us. You want to talk about this week?
Absolutely. Uh again, my name is Eric Penning. Uh with Cedar Valley Cyclists, we have tons of activities. Let me back up. I want to say thank you to the council and the mayor for taking this on. Uh and the efforts that you guys have done throughout the City of Waterloo, uh making cycling more safe, more friendly. It's open to oppo- opportunities for us to put on rides. Uh we have weekly rides through the City of Waterloo now. We have weekly rides through the City of Waterloo now. We have Ride for a Cause, which utilizes the city, the businesses, and all this good stuff. So that's just a result of all your good efforts, so thank you so much for that. Cedar Valley Cyclists is putting on a month-long of fun activities, but in particular, through the, I know you listed a bunch there, but through the fourteenth through the eighteenth, we'll actually be doing activities Bike to Work. If you take a picture of you at your workplace with your bike, submit it to our Facebook page, you have an opportunity to win multiple gift cards from our local businesses, which is really exciting. We'll also, on the Friday of the official Bike to Work Day, we'll have tents set up by the John Deere Tractor Museum. And so we'll have that for an opportunity for somebody from seven AM to nine AM that morning, for people to come by and take pictures at that place. We'll have water, free handouts, things like that, so lots of good stuff going on, and we appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
We have eggs and toast and...
Something like that.
All right, we want to thank you so much for promotion of the Bicycle Master Plan. If you take a look at what other countries are, I mean, cities are doing, this is exactly the type of exercise and exactly one of the modes of transportation and quality of life. It doesn't cost that much to do either, so we appreciate your efforts and look forward to participating also on the Bike to Work Week. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right. All right, next up on the agenda is historic, the Historic Preservation Proclamation, and Mr. Ed Addison is here to join us. All right, whereas May is Historic Preservation Month, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, tourism promotion, neighborhood revitalization, fostering local pride, and maintaining overall community character while enhancing livability. Whereas historic preservation can benefit Americans of all ages, walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds in communities. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. And whereas the Waterloo Historic Preservation Commission will be holding its annual celebration of those who have made a difference in Waterloo preservation over the last year on May third. And whereas Waterloo currently has twenty-five national registered listings and three historic districts. Now I, therefore, Quentin Hart, hereby proclaim the City of Waterloo, May two thousand eighteen, as Historic Preservation Month. So pretty important to our local community and other communities around the country as well. So Ed, tell us a little bit about this month.
Well, I'll start out. Well, like you mentioned, this Thursday, May third, we have our annual awards presentation at the Grouse Museum. Along with that, it'll be our second year of our endangered building list for Waterloo. And first time this year, we're having a art contest by schoolchildren, which will be displayed at the Waterloo Public Library through the month of May, and the public can vote on their favorite one, so get out there and take a look at what's there.
And, you know, a little while ago, probably a couple months, I had the fortunate opportunity to talk to other people across the country and within our state that talk about historic preservation and kind of fight to make sure that the tax credits, the grants, and all those programs are in place, because if you lose the character of your community, then you don't remember what was there. And I think it's important for our young people and all those to be able to remember the rich historical portions of our community. So, you know, we want to thank you for your efforts and those that have really making this Preservation Month come alive in the City of Waterloo, so thank you. All right, I will like to call up Cindy Moore, Executive Director for the YWCA. I keep spinning. Just we'll have you on this side. All right, how are you today, Fuest?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Your name?
Hillary Oberle.
Hillary, nice to meet you. All right, whereas the Waterloo City Council of Waterloo, Iowa proudly supports the YWCA of Blackhawk County in the celebration of Stand Against Racism. And whereas Stand Against Racism is now a signature campaign of the YWCA USA to build community among those who work for racial justice and to raise awareness about the negative impact of institutional and structural racism in our communities. This campaign is one part of a larger national strategy to fulfill their mission of eliminating racism. And whereas founded by YWCA Trenton and YWCA Princeton in two thousand and seven, Stand Against Racism quickly grew to have a national presence by two thousand and ten, when an additional eighty YWCA's across the nation took a stand. In two thousand and fifteen, one hundred and fifty-two YWCA's along with six hundred and fifty community organizations across forty-four states, plus the District of Columbia, joined in the Stand Against Racism. Whereas community sites include United Ways, Chamber of Commerce, state governments, and other municipalities, universities, and colleges, Fortune 500 companies and small businesses, houses of worship, schools, civic association, nonprofit organization, hospitals, and others. Whereas we salute the YWCA in its praiseworthy mission to eliminate racism, empower women, and stand up for social justice, to help families and strengthen communities. Now, therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, as Stand Against Racism Day. That's a lot. That's a lot. So could you tell us a little bit about what's happening?
Well, this year for each YWCA gets to pick their own kind of event. And what we did this year is we handed out personal pledges where people personally pledged to take a stand against racism. We asked them to sign on to poster boards, and then when you sign on, you get a sticker that we hope you will proudly wear throughout the community so that people know that you are standing with us to take a stand against racism. The YWCA has a long history of community action kind of work, and in fact, in the early nineteen thirties, we actually integrated our swimming pool and started asking women of color to serve on our board of directors. And so we were ahead in that, and we want to continue the good work that the YW has done and the community has done. I think that working together, even though there's a lot of work still to do, we'll get there.
Right, thank you. Did you have anything? Well, I just want to thank you so much and thank the YWCA locally and across the entire world for taking a stand. I think they say you, what you permit is what you promote, and taking a stand, making sure you want to eliminate racism, discrimination of all forms that block people from being able to be as successful as they can be, that is a worthy, worthy thing to do. So bless you along your journeys, and thank you so much for being that voice within our community as well. All right, thank you. All right, I think I have one more presentation. Is there someone that's going to come up and, Michelle, would you come on up? Terry, come on up. William, I guess you can come on up.
Wants to come up there?
All right, today I had the very fortunate opportunity to attend the Exchange Club's Golden Deeds Award today, and there was a special, can we come in here like together? Come on. Sure, sure. And there was a very special presentation made, and here to tell us a little bit more about that is Michelle.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd just like to, we wanted to bring and call attention to an award that we gave today at the Elks Club and thank the mayor for being there as well. Each year, the Waterloo Exchange Club makes a presentation to a community group that exemplifies the meaning of our club. We are concentrated in four areas, which are Americanism, youth activities, child abuse prevention, and just plain good community things. And so in recognizing Police Chief Dan Treoka and the police department, we felt that he really exemplifies the meaning of the Exchange Club. Not only has he personally very invested in our community, recently ending up with the United Way chair, he's also been very involved with Family and Children's Council, but also he allows the police department to be involved in the community, and we feel that is so important. Each month, he names an officer of the month, and I'm always amazed at all the things that our police department are doing above and beyond just the normal things that we think that they do. So they really are impacting our community positively, and we would like to recognize them for that. So thank you very much.
And the application was extraordinary. There were highlighted things that had been done within the Waterloo Police Department from the beginning of youth outreach programs to, you know, saving a life, but there are so many things that was in that application. It was a very special day for Chief Treoka and also for the Waterloo Police Department. Some words that came up was selfless, courage, so phenomenal day, phenomenal recognition, and we thank them for their efforts. So on behalf of the Exchange Club, I guess we are presenting the Golden Deeds Award presented to Chief Dan Treoka and the Waterloo Police Department by two thousand seventeen and eighteen Exchange Club of Waterloo.
Well, I just want to, first of all, thank the mayor for his encouragement, support, and for empowering the officers of the police department. I want to thank the council for their support, and like I said earlier, we're a police department of leaders, and it's a department I'm incredibly proud of, incredibly proud to serve with, and I accept this award in the name of Sergeant Robert Greenlee, so thank you.
Thank you all for the work that you do for the community as well and your acknowledgement. All right, thank you. William, you look like you wanted the microphone on. All right. Okay, so oral presentation. That is a lot. All right, let me get caught up. All right, at this time, we will have oral presentations, and those are for non-agenda related items. I've reviewed a couple tapes from the last couple weeks, and we just want to make sure that we are respectful of citizens up here and of the council and of the mayor and our staff. So without further ado, I would like to invite Ms. Mary Potter to talk about council member actions?
No, but close. I'm Mary Potter, two zero seven Leland. Am I too close? One of the things I'd like to talk today about is something I think we could all say was a positive. I have many times come here and griped and said I think things are bad, but today I'd like to offer some suggestions that I would hope you or other members would also agree with. One of the first is when I watch the council on television, we can't hear you most of the time, because as soon as you look away, you can't hear you. And I think that needs to either be addressed with wearing it this way or making sure everybody is directly talking into the microphone. The second thing is I think if we have a three-minute time limit on something that someone speaks about, we should adhere to that. And if the rules say it is one item, the moment a second item is presented, it should be halted. I think those are rules you have made, and I think you need to keep them. I also would like to see you consider not having the same person come up for everything on the agenda and continually telling that person's feeling. I think it needs to be, you speak once or possibly twice, that's something you have to decide to do. The next thing that I think really needs to take place is I am hearing things like, well, this will last this much longer. Well, who says it will? We get an expert here from Aspro that says one thing, but then somebody else continually says, but it's this. Where did that authority, where did that information come from? Why don't you not say, I went to the book, I went to Facebook, I went to wherever you went, or I talked to this one person whose name is? And if you choose not to name that person, I think Mayor Hart should have it so that he finds it's viable. I'm also very concerned about people who say we have a reputation that we do not like contractors, we do not honor certain ones. Who said that? Is that the whole public saying it? And then you need to say, forty-two people came to me and said, oh, they just don't like contractors. Who are those people? And again, if you do not want to name them, at least Mayor Hart should have them. You have no credibility, whatever, in my opinion, to say they or what happened. I think it means that you're not willing to share it. You can dream it up in your head, and if you dream it up in your head, you can say, well, they said it, they said it, I know this, I know that. How do you know it and who's the they said? No, just like you to ponder that a little, and that's the end of my story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks so much. Let me see, next we have Jody McFatten to talk about lease law. Are you in the audience, Jody? Okay, all right. All right, so that is, concludes the folks that actually registered beforehand. If you have some comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what's going on.
Jim Chapman, two two four Burch. I only come up once, Mayor. Several weeks ago, this time is back when we were going to hire a mechanic at eighty-four thousand dollars a year, I go to coffee with a bunch of John Deere workers, and we had some questions that we'd like to ask on hiring of city employees. You know, do we do background checks? Do we do drug checks? Do we hire the most qualified people? Do we hire the person with most experience? And once the employee is hired, do we pay that employee the same amount of wages that a person's been on the job for like fifteen, twenty years? Do they punch a clock in and out? I guess I got the John Deere mentality. And who checks on these employees during the day? Here's, I asked this question at the Thursday night meetings I've been going to for the city, and I haven't been getting any answers, and I was wondering if you could give me some answers to those questions, Mayor.
Sure.
Appreciate it very much. My email address is on there.
All right, thank you, good sir.
I know I've asked it on two different Thursday night sessions with the city we've been having, so I appreciate what you can do.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm Reed Craft, nine twelve Colby, Waterloo. I'm here representing the Salvation Army Advisory Board. Several weeks ago, I asked that two lots on Franklin Street be put on for sale, and I'd again like to ask if that be done. Some members indicated they wanted to think about it, and we've had time to think, and I would encourage you to either put it on for sale or declare that you're not going to. The lot doesn't look very nice, it needs grading and seating. After rain, water ponds in the middle of the lot, somebody has dumped a dozen or more tires in the lot. I can assure you, if you sell it to the Salvation Army, we'll beautify it and make it fit to be property next to the Salvation Army Corps offices. So just ask that be done.
All right, thank you. Yeah, either that or you can give Mr. Craft a call.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I just met with two staff members, majors of the Salvation Army last week. They're actually conducting a master plan layout for their entire campus area, and so they've asked that we put this on hold until they finish that, and then they'll be presenting that to us so we can look at the overall development of that area for their campus.
All right, thank you.
Forest Dillavue, seventeen twenty-five Honey Road.
Forrest Dillavou, 1725 Honeycomb Road. I got two short things tonight that I'd like to address. One is the footing drain disconnects. The city came to my neighborhood and did the footing drain disconnects in our neighborhood, and it sounded like we were going to go through the city and do some other areas. I've had a lot of people ask me, "Are we the only ones they're going to pick on, or are they going to do some more?" I would like an answer to whether the footing drains disconnects will be continued in other areas or if you're done. My next observation is today on Leonard Kowalski Drive, I observed some potholes being filled. And we had a machine out there that had hot patch material in it, which I think is ideal. However, this hot patch material was taken out of the truck and throwed in the holes full of sand and dirt. When I first went by, I couldn't believe it, so I turned around and went back past two more times. We've got some nice hot patch material, we've got a crew out there, it's throwed in with the sand and the salt, and when you've got salt in the bottom of a hole, it's the same as salt in the bottom of a wound. It won't let it do anything other than continue to deteriorate the concrete. We've got something that could work, and the little S-10 pickup with the guy in it driving back and forth attempting to pack that asphalt is not really sufficient. I think a small roller on a trailer behind the S-10 pickup would have been more suitable. They did about three or four blocks and then stopped, they only did one side of the road. Leonard Kowalski was a wonderful man, and I think a street named after him should have wonderful care, and it definitely wasn't getting it today. I think you need a work session on how to fill potholes. I'm not a professional pothole filler, but I had the end of my driveway all broken up, and I took my leaf blower and I blew all the sand and all the salt out of there, and the city was going by, and they put some there, and I packed it with my Dodge truck with 150,000 miles on it. And, you know, it's still there today, and it still looks good. Down the road where they did the other driveways, it's all broken up and all gone, you can't even tell which ones they filled. Doing the job the right way will save us money, save us time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dillavou. I think, because I've heard this a couple times, I think I'm gonna take off this suit and I'm gonna get out there and, no, I'm serious, and go out there and take a look and do something myself too on that one. The footing drain disconnect, do we have any idea? The hydraulic modeling we did and testing, we thought in service areas 15 and 16, that that at the time represented, what, 70, 80% of our overall problems, but you want to slightly touch on that?
Steve Holmbraker, Waste Management Services Director. The original program for the footing drains went through what we called service areas 15 and 16, somewhat up in the northwest, north central part of Waterloo. And essentially, there was quite a bit of money spent on all that. Through the whole program, there was about 4,000 households that were targeted, and I don't have the numbers exactly in front of me, but about two-thirds of those actually did have the footing drains removed. About a third of them didn't, and I think there was somewhere in the neighborhood of 80 that didn't comply. And I think, you know, from that regard, that's where that is. But moving forward, there's essentially been no money set aside to do anything further at this point in time, so the program, at least based on the involvement that I've been in, has not planned to continue to go any further within the city.
Okay. Thank you, mayor, staff, and council.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I went by Station 6 again today, and it's closed. I understand from a budget meeting hearing that I was at, that Station 6 has a very, very important fire truck in it that has EMS qualifications or capabilities, and every time I go by there when Station 6 is closed, that fire truck's still sitting in there. I would suggest that the city look at removing it from that location and putting it in a station that's always open, so that that important piece of equipment is totally utilized to its capabilities. I have said this a couple times before, one time here and one time at the fire station meeting when I was with the academy, and I hear no response about whether there's a thought about doing that or not, but if that's such an important piece of equipment, along with our important firefighters who are also cross-trained as paramedics, we need to have that truck on the street. The other thing I want to comment about is that it's actually on Consent Number 6 and 18 through 22, it's a budget amendments. I guess I don't understand setting a budget and letting people deviate from it. You set a budget at home, you better follow it, or you're going to be short of money. I guess we already are. Excuse me, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Yes, ma'am. And after you, Mr. Sherbon.
My name is Beverly Cosby, I live at 315 Window Court, and I am part of that 63 construction. In fact, my house is at the, will be at the pentacle of that construction as you're making that arch going over. But there's four neighbors, I have three, one neighbor on the other side of me, and two on one side of me and two on the other. We are strongly desiring a structural engineer to come in because of the construction that is going on. We, I have come home and I have had things falling off the walls, we have, I have cracks. I lost a window out of my garage, some of the other residents around me have had the same things happen. We're concerned that during this construction, there's going to be some type of structural damage to our properties. We were told at one particular meeting that, well, the city's not buying any more houses. It wasn't that we were concerned about buying houses, we just want to make sure that our houses are safe. So, we're really seriously considering having a structural engineer come in, evaluate our houses now, and also at the end of that project. We just want you to know that, yes, we're concerned, because like I said, we're still trying to envision this concept of this arch going over, and like I said, my house will be at the pentacle. Once you get to the top of that house, the top of that hill, you'll be able to look dead into my kitchen or my bathroom, or my bedroom. So, we're just concerned about the structural part, the structural damage, because right now with the huge cranes that are over there and the vibrations that are going on, you can hear, you can feel it from the end of Newell all the way down to almost to Dane Street. And so, like I said, we're real concerned, and I have talked to one of the engineers, I did talk to one of the engineers, because when they cut into the side of the hill, they killed the trees. And so, now we have two big old, two big trees that are all dead, and we don't know what's going to happen with them if a big wind comes along or whatever, but they cut the roots, and you could see them when they did that. So, we're just voicing our concerns and making sure that the city is aware of some of the things that are going on over there because of the construction.
All right, Ms. Cosby, did you talk to one of our, was it the city engineer, or was it the DOT's engineer?
I called you Jeff.
Jeff, that's us?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, are you involved in that project? Can we figure out something? If they had stuff breaking, she also not, you know, talking to us is good, but we also need to be talking to the DOT to let them know the exact problems, and they need to make themselves available to Mrs. Cosby. So, tomorrow, can you email Eric Thorson your contact information so we can get you in contact with the DOT folks to make sure it's taken care of? All right? All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
John Sherbon, 1715 Robin Road. Comments, basically, that we, a lot of us gentlemen, if you want to use that term, come up here and ask questions. The reason we ask questions with the staff or the council or whatever is to gain knowledge. And sometimes we agree and sometimes we disagree, as per the council and even the staff, you know, your helpers and stuff. That's why we work together or try to work together. We're not against anything in Waterloo, we're trying to make the city good. We're also trying to make it affordable. So, for somebody to come up, you know, necessarily, we're looking to smooth this operation out best we can. We really want to get along with everybody, but we also have a lot of answers and ask a lot of questions for those answers, because, you know, the taxes are goofy. I made a statement when I first started coming to these meetings, how can our department heads be poorly paid and the staff short money, and we're still the highest tax? I could never figure this out, you know? You can flop all the numbers around, but when it actually comes time for the tax, because we have good management in the schools and in the county, that's why we look reasonably good, but when it comes to taxes, we're in a little bit of trouble. And it's because we're very large and trying to grow, but you can't keep, you know, someplace there, we can't keep spending, we're not the United States of America. They've tried to spend as much money as you can on as many projects and see what happens. And it makes it tough, you know? That's what we're here for, you know? It's not start trouble, it's not to be on TV. All the stuff that I've heard, I have a lot of people that come up to me and say, you know, "Thanks for asking the questions." They're not, you know, particularly trying to run anybody down. These are good people that we get working for us. We got a good council, but sometimes we get a little bit, you know, our ears burn, or we're trying to impress somebody that, something, or something, I don't know, you know? I don't know. And, well, just one little question, it would be all right, mayor. Last week, I heard a question, I believe, or about when we were talking about Ainsborough, and we had this bond for, money for $37,000 for a study. Did that study include, did I hear that right? I went back and listened, but does that have something to do with a roundabout? Was something mentioned about a roundabout, spending money to research that?
Who was Sandy? You want one?
No.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. Not at that intersection. When we talked about the Green Hill Progress one, we're doing a study at that one.
But the money was for the Ainsborough project, right?
That...
So, in relation to what he's talking about last week, were roundabouts included in that?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Todd Oviedo, 124 Amity Drive. I promise not to speak of roundabouts. In regards to city business and citizens asking questions about things, there was a story that dropped on us this past weekend in regards to an audit from a federal agency coming in and the city not having documents together, difficulty being available to the people that were coming in from the federal department. I don't have a direct source on this, that's why I'm just going to say that straight up, so I'm asking the question. It was my understanding that during the indoctrination time for the new council, that during the classes they went to, they were informed of certain reports that had to be delivered, financial reports and whatnot, that needed to be delivered on a monthly basis. And I had heard that those had not been submitted in that time. My question is twofold. Has the city been submitting all the documents on a monthly basis that are required by state law? And if not, during this time in 2016, which has to do with the floods and the documents that were being searched for by the FEMA agency that took until this month to get, was any of that delay because of FEMA wanting those documents that weren't submitted? Thank you.
May I ask which council member you got that from? Because there was only three council members there, and myself and a staff person. May I ask where you got that from so I can talk directly to that council person?
I will be happy to give you that information after the meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, there we have it.
Okay, I move to close the presentations, receive the comments, and place them on file.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion on the consent agenda to receive, place it on file, approve with the addition to A1 of the dollar amount $2,775.69.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. What was that? All right, so a motion's made with the second, all in, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by Embankment LLC to rezone 0.87 acres from R4 CZ Multiple Residence Conditional Zoning District to CZ Commercial District for construction of a multi-tenant retail center located west of 1203 West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second. That motion has been made with the second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Sorry about that, Councilman Morrissey. The motion has passed. Now, we have our public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this particular item? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. My first comment, I guess, about this is that we need to infill or rent what we have. I did a little driving around for about an hour today, and I have a pretty extensive list of places that I went by that are still available for rent on, you know, a convenience store or whatever with this proposed project. Next, Amy Winin, there's three open spots across from Granger. There's a building going up, and it looks like it's going to be some sort of for rent space. Kimball by Prestige Cleaners, there's one open. People's Court on Kimball, where Farmer State Bank used to be, is still all open, that's a pretty big size facility. By Neighbor's Bar, there's a large area open that used to be a fitness store. 3556 Kimball Avenue is open. By Ben, and the Ben Franklin Mall. I'm not sure about the Neela, but it just looks like there's no activity there for several days. Heritage Gallery, I think, is open, and there used to be a Bosnian Bakery behind that, that's, I'm not sure about. By the Dollar Tree out by Sam's Club, there's one open. The Old Pet Store by Jerry's Furniture is open. Out by Freddy's, there's seven open spots in that mall area. Behind Olive Garden, there's a big building out there that's open. By All Time Fitness, there's an area that's open. A big area by Aquan Loan, 75,000 square feet. The corner Commercial and 11th Street, there's two buildings that are available. So, it just makes me wonder why we want another strip mall in this town when we have all kinds of spots within, what, three to five miles of those spots that ought to be prime areas for people to develop into rather than building another strip mall. So, I would hope that you do not let this go through. I don't disagree with the man wanting to make some money, but I've also heard through the grapevine that he's going to get this property, or he's going to hold off on a lease agreement maybe until he has all the facilities filled. And another aspect of that is that, do we need more increased traffic on Ridgeway and Casey's got shot down because of increased traffic. I got shot down several years ago for wanting to put a convenience store at my location because it was increased traffic, but yet we have all these other places that increased traffic on Ainsborough. But yet we have all these other places that, that increased traffic on Ainsborough and we don't do anything about it. Thank you.
Mr. Dreyer, thank you for the, uh, the comments and, and the spaces. Um, absolutely mean it for real. I, I would, um, say that to say through the grapevine and say what a developer said he or she wanted to do was kind of going a little bit too far about talking about their particular interest if you haven't talked to the developer. So it's not a slap on the wrist. I just want to make sure for the public record, um, that that is noted to people out in the community as well. So in all good intentions, I just wanted to make that record, record known. Uh, anyone else that would like to comment on this particular item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second. That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion received, filed, considered and passed for the first time. An ordinance amending, ordinance number five zero seven nine is amended of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving rezoning zero point eight seven acres from R four CZ multiple residence conditional zoning district to C two commercial district for construction of a multi-tenant retail center.
Second. That motion has been made with the second, council questions?
Mr. Mayor? I, I guess I have two. One, uh, uh, I think everybody up at this table is, uh, supportive of economic development and, and new building and new properties on, uh, the tax rolls. But kind of following up to Mr. Dreyer, I did get a call from a Realtor who apparently doesn't want to be named or he'd be here talking about it. But he said he counted eighty, uh, comparable spaces available in Waterloo today. And so I guess my question for Noel, uh, would be for his department. Do we have a number in mind where we would tend to not incentivize people to do this? Or are we just going to continue to do this as long as developers are willing to step up and, and, uh, roll the dice on their money? Um, yeah.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I think the easiest answer is probably location, location, location. Um, you know, there's a lot of, uh, difference nuances in each location, um, that, uh, that people are looking at. Developers are looking at, they're looking at traffic counts, they're looking at traffic patterns. Um, you know, you have someone willing to invest here. Um, you know, is there going to be a point where we won't want to build any more houses? Cause we think too many are for sale. Um, are we going to stop people from building houses? It's kind of the same thing with commercial. We have investors that are looking to develop here. Obviously they're investing their money. Um, they probably have prospects lined up for their spaces. Those prospects have obviously looked at the other spaces for whatever reason want to go to this one. Um, I think as long as we have, uh, people willing to invest in Waterloo, we should work with them to do so.
Do you think the overabundance of vacant space has anything to do with our decreasing values?
I would not know that, obviously. You'd have to ask, you'd have to ask business people that, what they're exactly looking at when they're not going into spaces or when they are, are going into spaces. I can tell you generally, uh, commercial tenants will want to be by other commercial tenants. They want to be, they want to be bundled, they want to be by each other. Um, so that you're bringing the, the public there to shop there and then you're looking around at other spaces while they're there.
Thank you.
All right, other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to make a comment on, if you read the conditions of the zoning on this, they were, I mean, I know someone had brought up that possibly a gas station wanted to go in there in the past. This is far from a gas station. So the community would be able, I think, would, to absorb this traffic. They've made adjustments to what type of business could not be in there. They've also made adjustments as to the east driveway of Dixon would be the enter only. And the west driveway of Dixon would be the exit only to kind of make it more of a coordinated, uh, uh, traffic flow, if you will, so it's not a bottleneck. So I, I think they've done a good job to, um, take, um, a, a, a property and, um, get a nice development here that actually would probably work with our concerns with traffic in the Ridgway Street.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
Look, Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, I just, uh, if Noel could, uh, tell everybody who Embankment LLC is. Um, and secondly, would like to know, uh, what exactly approval of this does. Uh, thirdly, uh, being on the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, uh, we had discussed this area and, uh, were definitely firm on the idea that a sidewalk, uh, needs to be part of any kind of future planning. That sidewalk being on the three sides, Ridgway, Ainsborough, uh, and Dixon Drive. And then the final thing is, um, where does Buxton? I mean, I haven't heard from Buxton or anything about Buxton in eons. Uh, where does Buxton come in, in a situation like this where we have, uh, this possibility of, of commercial development?
All right, Noel?
Embankment LLC is Dennis Hogan, um, with Shorts Travel. So they have owned this land for, for quite some time and been working to try to get it redeveloped. Um, as you can see on the sheet, there wasn't conditions put in there about sidewalk being installed on Ridgway and along Ainsborough. Um, after looking at the traffic study of Ridgway Avenue is completed. So that essentially we're looking at the entire corridor, um, of Ridgway there as it's, as that study is completed to look at what's going to be done with that. We're obviously assuming that that would include some pedestrian accommodations. If something is improved along there, um, if that's recommended, then they'd be putting that in, those, uh, those sidewalk connections in. Um, Buxton, so Buxton's role is essentially to help provide, uh, data to the city and to retail prospects about what characteristics the city has as a whole and for specific sites. So as this site now planned is, is being developed, we'll be sharing this data with Buxton so that they can show this, um, square footage spaces for tenants here. We'll be sharing that with the Realtors, um, as well, so that they can go ahead and have that information available to them as they're working to bring, uh, new businesses to Waterloo.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just as a follow-up, a, a question, uh, regarding the sidewalks again, Noel. And that is, um, when I read this over, it looked as though everything was just a maybe. And I'll, I'll, what I understand, uh, Noel, uh, and Mr. Mayor, is that I do believe that the Complete Streets Advisory Committee recommendation is that whoever develops that needs to have sidewalk on all three of those areas, Dixon, Ainsborough and Ridgway. And then the other part of that is that, uh, rather than having buildings built back away from the road, they need to come closer to the road. That seems to be, uh, working in a lot of other growing communities, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and finally, is there anybody who has actually proposed, uh, building there? And if so, how do they finance that building?
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, Dennis Hogan, five forty-nine Sunset Road, Waterloo, of course. Um, answered the question about financing. We haven't finalized it yet, but be honest with you, we could do it without bank, without a bank loan, but we're going to try to go through a bank loan.
All right. And was there sidewalks mentioned or?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So the Complete Streets Committee did recommend that the sidewalks be installed, uh, right away. It is still staff's recommendation that the sidewalks be installed. If the Ridgway, uh, study recommends that a sidewalk would be installed as a part of that in overall corridor redevelopment.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Okay.
Mr. Schimpf?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I am in full support of, uh, this project. It is right at the edge of Ward Five that I represent. Um, but during the campaign season, um, anyone that I talked to up there was opposed to the development that was trying to go in there at the time. So I will be supporting this in full support, um, but I will not be in support of suspending the rules to give them an opportunity to come in and address any issues that they might have in the next few weeks.
All right, and I, and I think they did a careful job of putting parameters around this development uh, to make sure they calm some of the, uh, community thoughts about what type of development that, uh, they didn't want to see. So we want to thank you, Mr. Hogan, as well. Is there a time concern related to this? Um, you need to, uh, in order to get this done during construction season or come back to, um, cause you got to come back with the plat as well at some point, right? Or it's good to go? Are there any time constraints?
Fred Mehe, thirty-five ten Kimball Avenue. Um, and I'm representing Mr. Hogan on the leasing of this property. So to the time concern, uh, and this also addresses a couple of other points or questions. We've got a letter of intent, uh, from an, uh, from a, a national, uh, coffee chain that wants to occupy one space. We've got another, we're in dialogue with another, uh, tenant whose, uh, lease expires at the end of the year. They are interested if they can get in here at the end of the year. So time is important. Two weeks doesn't seem like very much, but if we can compress that, that would be helpful. We actually have got, uh, three different groups that would oc, that would occupy about eighty percent of the building. Mr. Hogan's gonna pull the trigger and move forward if he has two suites, John. So we should be at that critical junction here for him to make a decision. And, and the goal would be if we can compress that time zone and get occupancy before the end of the year, then it, it makes, uh, it affects the city of Waterloo and it becomes a matter, it becomes taxable in two thousand seventeen. If we delay things, and, and it'll be a push, I, if, but if we delay things, uh, then it won't go on the tax rolls till two thousand nineteen. So, uh, selfishly, it, it helps both, uh, both you and, and us.
All right, all right. So you need to get moving. Was, was there any objections at the planning and zoning or whenever? Any calls?
And, and mailings went out to all the neighbors, correct?
All right, all right. Um, we have a motion of first time, uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. That motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
All right, thank you. We'll pick this up next weekend. Hopefully we can move forward. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schimpf?
Um, number three, uh, is a request by the City of Waterloo to rezone two lots of, um, point five acres and point five four acres for a total of one point oh, zero four acres from A1 Agricultural District to R, R two, one and two family residence district directly adjacent to fifty fifty Falk Road. And I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
Second. That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this particular item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the hearing, receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second. That motion had been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion received, filed, considered and passed for the first time. An ordinance amending, ordinance number five zero seven nine is amended. City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a rezon of certain property located adjacent to fifty fifty Falk Road.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Uh, time issues on this or? All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
All right, thank you. Number four, please. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Amos? I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing. And that is for taxable sewer revenue capital loan notes. The issuance of not to exceed one million seven hundred thousand dollars taxable sewer revenue capital loan notes and Series twenty eighteen State of Iowa revolving loan fund.
Second. That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? Eric, did you want to get Mrs. Cosby information too at some point? And she, I didn't know if she was waiting to communicate, but I see you sitting there a few, or you can wait? All right, yes, sir.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. Uh, my question is, does this add to the present loan debt? And what would that figure go to? We have done a lot of bonding and now this, this is a capital loan. But loan is money that we have to pay back like bonds are.
All right, uh, answer that. Thank you, Mr. Dreyer.
Michelle Whedon, Chief Financial Officer. This is the first borrowing that we're making from the state revolving loan fund for, and it'd actually be for one point six million. I didn't double check the amount of sewer debt we have outstanding today. I think it's about twenty-six million. It will definitely add to that. Um, however, I think we're probably paying off more this year than we're borrowing. And we, we do intend to grow the sewer supported debt to make the improvements required under the consent decree and for other purposes over, over the next few years.
So that's kind of a yes, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we, I thought I heard her say we're going to pay down, uh, more than we borrowed this year, but these are necessary improvements to comply with our consent decree. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
So you're, if you want to wait until we open it up for your discussion, uh, Mr. Amos?
Motion to close the hearing.
And receive, uh, oral comments?
And receive oral comments.
A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed one million seven hundred thousand dollars in taxable sewer revenue capital loan notes, Series twenty eighteen.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Mr. Schmidt?
So would this be part of the, um, I think it was seventy-three million dollars in, in sewer, uh, repairs that we're going to be doing over the next twenty years? Is this kind of all part of that whole conversation?
As this, um...
This is actually part of the eighteen million dollars that is required under the consent decree.
So is that part of the seventy-three or is that a different, is there two different?
There are several different tables. Table out of the sewer master plan, table one is the consent decree of eighteen. I don't recall off the top of my head if you add table two, which are not required but may be done. That, those two may add up to seventy-three. I don't, I don't remember that off the top of my head right now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have questions?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to, or?
You already did, you already did.
Okay.
All right, so Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm sorry, you're voting on the instituting proceedings to take additional actions on the, um, capital loan notes. So I think you said, Mr. Schmidt, and got in. So we know what we're voting on.
Yes.
Good idea. Uh, Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan and disbursement agreement by and between the City of Waterloo, Iowa and the Iowa Finance Authority and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of one million six hundred thousand...
payment of $1,600,000 in taxable sewer revenue capital loan notes, Series 2018, of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number five is a motion received and filed proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the purchase of one two-wheel-drive compact pickup truck with extended cab for the engineering department.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that likes to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of bid documents, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Our estimate was $25,000. Our first bidder was Community Chevrolet of Cedar Falls, Iowa. Their bid amount was $22,850.90. Second bidder was Riddell Chevrolet of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount was $23,092.40. Third bidder was Withem Auto Center of La Porte City, Iowa. Their bid amount was $24,940.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the award of bid to Community Chevrolet of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of $22,850.90, in the conjunction with the purchase of one two-wheel-drive compact pickup truck with extended cab for the engineering department.
Second. All right, the motion's been made with the second. That's all in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll, well, I'm sorry. A motion. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schimpf?
Number six, I'm moved to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that is for the purchase and installation of a sixty-foot by eighty-foot pole building to be located at the Yardway site.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that'd like to speak to this item?
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. Mayor, what are we going to use that pole building for? Going to put the grinder and the front loader in there? And how are we paying for it?
All right. Sandy, is that all your questions, good sir? All right, Sandy?
Sandy Gray, interim Public Works Director. Yes, the grinder, the shredder, everything is going to be put in there and get out of the elements, because when we bring them back to the Public Works Building, we have to hire to have them brought back. And then they're still left outside because there isn't room. This way, the mechanics will be able to go out there and work on them right, right on site. They'll have their tools and stuff out there. What else did you ask?
How much it'd be paid for?
Sanitation funds. It's no bonding or anything. It comes out of the sanitation budget. We have it budgeted for the building.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Other questions? Madam Clerk? Oops. Hearing is, we have, who made that? Mr. Schimpf?
Mr. Mayor, that part is on here. Motion to close the hearing. That's where we're at, right? Because that's, that line's not in here.
Yeah, that's awful. Wait, yeah, where's?
We need to close the hearing, though.
It's missing. It is missing an act.
It is, it is missing on the?
We need to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm moved to make a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm moved to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to interim Public Works Director for review.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Number seven?
Do you want me to read the bids?
Oh, yes, please read the bids.
The estimate was $100,000. We had one bidder. It was Spawn and Rose Lumber Company of Jessup, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their amount was $72,750. For option A, bid amount was $24,200. That's for a concrete floor. Option B for office and bathrooms was $8,750. Option C for electrical work was $16,467. For plumbing and heating work for option D, the bid amount was $12,443.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that is for replacement of parking lot equipment and the installation of a parking access and revenue control system, parks, and related parking lot improvements at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Can we get a second?
Second, sorry.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now, the hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to make comments on this particular item going a second time? All right.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Probably very anticipated to get this done. Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Schmidt? Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, I think Mr. Schmidt went to the bathroom, where I need to follow suit in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt's still out.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second. A motion, a motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bids.
Our estimate was $165,000. We had received one bid from Parking Incorporated of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount for the base was $153,909. Their alternate bid was $49,655, for a total bid amount of $203,564.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving award of contract to Parking Inc. of Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of $203,564, in conjunction with the Waterloo Regional Airport Parking Access and Revenue Control System Parks and Related Parking Lot Improvements Project.
Second. A motion, a motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could I ask counsel for like a five-minute break?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to take a five-minute recess.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sir, motion to reconvene?
Second. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are, we are back. Could someone take number eight, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Number eight is a resolution approving a performance evaluation schedule for all city employees.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Councilwoman Klein, would you like to comment on this one?
Yes, I would. I proposed the resolution while I was on the campaign trail, as you call it. I, one of the things I promised was that I would see if I could get this thing rolling with performance evaluations. For a long time, Waterloo did not do them at all. And I realized that recently, we have begun that process, but I think it's such a serious thing that it behooves us to act as a council and, and ask that that be done every year. It's like a policy statement that we expect it to be done every year. Would you like me to read the resolution?
Please.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, as follows. Section one, performance evaluations shall be conducted for all city employees between January first and July first of each year by the applicable supervisor. Section two, performance evaluations for the city clerk and city attorney shall be conducted by all members of the city council between January first and July first of each year. Said employees may request their performance evaluations be conducted in executive session pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5I.
All right, thank you. Counsel, comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Amos?
I understand what Councilwoman Klein is trying to do here from a standpoint of looking at the city employees, making sure they're being efficient. But my question is, is do we do evaluations now? I mean, are the city employees just don't have to worry about evaluations on a yearly basis? Is that something that is a norm, or how does that work? I'm not sure of how it actually works.
Right. So, right now, within the, within the employee handbook, and Mr. Dunn had to leave for personal reasons, but our HR director, but within that probationary period, there has to be some type of evaluation performed to be able to move to the next level. So, some departments do them, some don't. We kind of took a analysis to see exactly who's doing that. And I am in total agreement with Councilwoman Klein, and this has been something that we have talked about, if Councilman Schmidt doesn't mind me, name dropping, something that's been talked about for about eight years while he's been here, two years while I've been here. The City of Waterloo, and this is not to throw anyone under the bus, but we have just now, almost a year, had a full-time HR director. In that timeframe, we've worked on a mechanism for employee evaluation, starting at the department head level. We put together a schedule that we are going to review each department head. The challenge that we're having right now is that in some aspects, it is, couldn't be considered not legal to do certain things based upon contracts that are already in place. This year in two thousand, this year in 2017, those rules were changed. In 2017, the ability to place those contracts into place has been limited just to salary negotiations, if I'm not mistaken. That means that we can take and place in the employee handbook a, a statement or put in a process for entire full-time city employees' reviews. And we're going to go into our bargaining, I think, maybe October or November. So, we actually are able to place that in our employee handbook without having to go renegotiate and do that stuff for other city employees. Number two, with regards to the evaluation of the city clerk and city attorney, there's, you know, each city that we've studied has particular process, but there's not one city that has all seven council members having public discussion about a city clerk and a city attorney's job performance. That leads to other implications. So, the process that I believe would be the best to get, to get us to that particular point would be, would be for those two, just, just for those two, because they do work with the city council. The HR director would send out a performance evaluation form to the mayor and all the council members that need to be completed. Each council member will score, can score those comments and make those included. The HR director or the Human Resources Department, once completed with the forms, can average out the scores in each category and come up with average scores overall. At that point, any of the comments in those categories could be added to the final review form and will be identified by using the council member or the mayor's and will be identified by using the council member or the mayor's initial comments. Any specific goals that will be added in the goal section with the initials used to identify who set the particular goal for the staff members. But at that point, once all that information is tabulated, the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and two other council members that are chosen at all of your discretion could discuss with the city attorney and city clerk their annual reviews. Upon the completion of that performance review meeting, signed copies of the review will be put in the employee's personnel file, and a copy can be provided to the actual employee. Employees wishing to add comments to their review may do so in this section provided or may provide a written statement. An employee's statement should be provided to the mayor, pro tem, and council members with the copy to HR, and then the employee's statement will be filed with the appropriate appraisal. But talking about job performance, that does not include demotion, termination, or demotion publicly presents an entire challenge in the future. So, I am absolutely in support of the resolution. I just believe that there's some concern on the actual way that it needs to be done, but I'm absolutely, wholeheartedly in support. So, I will ask, it has been made and made with the second, but I would ask that the council just trust that, that we can get this done so that folks can meet your objectives and goals. But I'm just asking that we do this the right way, which I believe needs to be done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I had one other question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, there will be, as far as this evaluation, there will be measurable goals for the individuals that they will be having to adhere to, is that what I'm hearing?
You mean the, the city attorney and the city clerk?
Yes.
The evaluation, we have one that we can provide to you. You guys can tweak it and find one that you like. I just think there's a way that it needs to be done to meet your goals and objectives legally. Yes, ma'am.
I really like what you had to say, and I understood that there was a little impediment in that the employee would have to request to go into executive session, which I would presume that one hundred percent of people would do that, and that it was not allowable for us as the council to go into executive session. I understood those rules. I like everything that you had to say right now about our responsibility to review the clerk and the attorney for the city. I, I would like a chance to work on the wording of that, and so I would like to perhaps make a motion to table this for maybe two weeks. Work on the wording of that second section and then leave the top section alone, which dealt with all the other city employees. Have it maybe impact or start next January. Two changes. Work on the second half, have the other, all of it start January two thousand nineteen.
So, you're moving to table it for two weeks?
Table it for two weeks while we, can we at that time, is that appropriate for us to work on the wording and come back with different wording?
I do have a question.
Let me finish, because Mrs. Klein, Mrs. Klein. So, I would probably say if we would resend this, we can sit down and develop a process. By doing it January of two thousand and nineteen, we're still obligated to contracts or to what we said we would do via the employee handbook. So, I would say we, I'm thinking that we would have the language ready to go for the employee handbook, but they're still in the same particular contract, or they're still under the same guise of what they signed for or working for. So, we'd be changing, we'd be changing their work. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, when will that contract be ended and when could this feasibly be started for union contracted people?
That's not until, so we go into, I think we'll probably start, who is, October, November, with the bargaining portion of it. And at that point, with regards to the employee handbook, that could be, that, that process could be entered into the employee handbook. Therefore, that's what everyone has to stick to. Therefore, everything that you requested to do with your constituents and what we've been talking about for ten to twelve years will actually be incorporated, and it has to be a standing policy, a part of the handbook. And that's not, that won't kick in until July first of nineteen.
Well, I, I think we could really come up with some good verbiage on this. I think if we put our heads together, we can do that. So, is it appropriate to table this as we work on the words? Or what's the alternative? Because I do think we should start with the non-unionized people right away.
Right.
January first.
I would, I would, just, I would let us get this into the employee handbook so it is. So, regardless if you're here, you're here, I'm here, this stands as something that will be moving forward. But, so, the department heads will be the first one under this timetable we have to have their overall reviews, but I'm just going through, talking to the attorneys. There's some problems in working through this. So, the process that we utilize for the city clerk and city attorney, you know, absolutely. And we've had an email correspondence before about that. And there is some good, good models that have been used out in other cities that if you would give me an opportunity to talk to you about it, I can show you those and work through, work through that with you.
Mr. Mayor, my only major concern here is that, you know, I know that you've instituted this, and I applaud that, I do. But we have to be a policymaking board, and we need, I believe we desperately need this policy for the day when you're governor and we have a new mayor, and maybe that person isn't as scrupulous about getting things done. So, I, I really do want to set a timeline of working on the verbiage for it. And I would think maybe tabling it for two weeks, let us get together and work. You already had the verbiage for the second part of it.
I would second that motion, and I do think, you know, we've, as you've mentioned, for eleven years, you and I have talked about this to one degree or another, and why it's taken us this long, I have absolutely no idea. But, so I think another couple of weeks is appropriate, and two weeks from now, if we're not where we want to be, then we can talk about either tabling it an additional period of time or rescinding because of something we've discovered in the, you know, the next two weeks. That seems to me to make sense.
I'd like to make, Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to table it for two weeks.
He just seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I seconded it.
No, I thought you did. I thought you did, and I was seconding your motion. I'm sorry.
I asked a question on a table motion. I just have a question on why the...
The table is on the floor right now, so we, no, I'm just letting you know. So, it's official, so we don't run into the confusion. There's a motion to table, and it's on the floor right now, and it is your opportunity to ask questions.
Is there a reason you said January to July? When we've got five hundred employees to do them all in that timeframe eventually is really cumbersome, why can't it be the whole year? Because they're going to be evaluated, I would presume, for a year's activity.
Well, I'm aware that not one person is doing all of those. I'm aware that it is broken off into sections. It's, it's department heads reviewing their departments, some of which are very small. I thought January first to July first gave a lengthy time. You know, the schools do them quicker than that, and so it's, it's all dependent on the numbers you have in your department.
It depends on how you do it. A lot of evaluations on the anniversary, one year from their anniversary. That needs to be worked, and I was just, that was one of the concerns I had is the timeframe. I think it becomes a little problematic, but that can be discussed.
Sharon, I, I welcome your input. I think if we all work on this together, it's going to be great.
There you go.
All right, so we have a table, two weeks on the floor. So, let's go ahead and vote on that table of two weeks. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, table for two weeks. Number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to make a resolution approving the City of Waterloo City Council Rules of Procedure.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm actually going to move to amend this. I'm going to make five amendments on that document. Would you like me to do them all as one amendment or as five amendments?
Mr. Mayor, I cannot understand what Mr. Schimpf is saying.
I apologize, Mr. Morrissey. I'm actually going to move to amend, and I'm going to make five amendments on the document, which is referred to as Exhibit A on the actual wording of the resolution. And would you like me to just do that all as one, or what would be easier for the city clerk?
Work session.
Work session? Individually, I think, would be, you could do it either way, but I think individually for typing and making sure we understand might be better.
Do you want me to do them one by one? I'm fine with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Morrissey, and then we'll move to...
Well, Mr. Schimpf, would you allow me to, would you yield for a minute?
I would, I would yield to the senior councilman.
Well, what I suggest, Mr. Mayor, is I'd like to make a motion to table this until the, either the second or third meeting in July.
Second.
Okay. Reasons, Mr. Morrissey?
Well, there are many reasons. First of all, this document is a draft document that is the attachment, and it is not a complete product by any means. Secondly, this is a resolution, and currently we do have Title I, Chapter four of the Waterloo City Code of Ordinances, dealing with city council, which has many rules of procedure. It has many of the things that are included in this draft document, which Kelly Felkley had presented to new council and which some of us old council didn't receive until March of this year. But at, at the same time, the third thing is that task forces were assigned at the beginning of your second term, Mr. Mayor, and one of those task forces was to deal with this issue right here. And we are just, matter of fact, this Friday, we have our, our third full meeting dealing with the council structure and the rules of procedure. And that is going to include these twenty-eight pages or documents that we are just getting started with. And I believe that it's extremely premature to introduce a resolution when we have not, in the task force, even got the meat and bones pared out of it to give to the full city council in a work session, which would precede the hoped-for passage of an ordinance to replace the current Title I, Chapter four that we have. So, for all those reasons, I, I just say that this needs to be tabled so that we can get this done and submit a complete document, one that doesn't have the errors and the mistakes and the things that are missing, some of the things that shouldn't be there, that are in it. We need to go through this and have a finished product, as finished as possible, to give to the city council. And what I, what I'm saying, the second or third meeting in July, that gives the, the task force the month of May to work on, and then in June, we can set up a work session or two to talk about this, because it's a lengthy document, Mr. Mayor. And it goes without saying, and for Mr. Schimpf, and I appreciate Mr. Schimpf's forbearance on this and yielding on this, that to introduce five amendments, I just want you to know, if we're going to proceed with this, I have been working on this ever since it was handed to me in March, Mr. Mayor. And right now, I have sixty-eight, sixty-eight amendments, if this is going to not be tabled, that I will be introducing tonight.
Oh, Chris, please.
That's why I'm asking that it be tabled, Mr. Mayor. We got work to do on this. This is an unfinished document. We would like time, the people on the task force, and I think the entire council wants time to review this thing and to put their two cents worth in, their three cents worth in, their dollar in, whatever, so that we can come up with a final document that we're proud of, that it has met the muster.
So, sixty-three plus five is sixty-eight.
No, Mr. Mayor, I have sixty-eight alone.
Seventy-three.
That was a good year. There's a spot available on that particular task force if you want to join.
I'd rather, I would rather, Mr. Mayor, if, if, see those meetings happen here in these chambers in front of the cameras with the media present, if...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
That would be a, a work session.
That's a work session.
Where we kind of hash out things instead of bringing it to a full council for a vote with last second amendments. We, a work session would probably be, fit your needs right now a, a little bit better. So...
We have a motion to table.
We have a motion to table. Any, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add one other thing, and that is, when we have a, in our Code of Ordinances language that contradicts what's in what this resolution is saying, that's a problem. And that's part also of what we need to get meted out in the discussions that we're having, not just in the task force, but in the work sessions. And I, I agree with Mr. Schimpf that we need to get this done. I agree with him a hundred percent. But let's get it done in a way so that what we're finished with, we don't have to keep coming back to because of errors or because there are cross-references. We got an ordinance, we got a resolution, so that's why the tabling is in the best interest of the City of Waterloo, Mr. Mayor.
So, take this away from a task force? Could we have work session and go through piece by piece until we get a document?
Mr. Mayor, I would not recommend that we take it away from the task force. Let the task force do the groundwork and then bring the whole thing, completed document to the full council for a work session. There's going to be a lot of work going through this, and for all of us to do it at one time would be difficult. We will bring all of the options to the, the full council. We're not going to keep anything back from them. We just want to make sure that everything is there that they need to consider.
All right. I'll take that under advisement. Yes, ma'am.
I, I prefer all meetings are public. I don't, I don't like those closed-door meetings. As you know, I just recently resigned from one of those committees because I just got real uncomfortable being behind closed doors. I want all of my colleagues to be able to, to have input in this and come up with a good final product. And I'm ready to do it right now.
Mr. Mayor?
We, we won't, we, by the time we get through seventy-three items and then turn around and then, you know, whether it's a task force or whether it is something that right now, in front of the citizens, where they even haven't even had enough time, this is better served for a period of work sessions if you don't like this being within a task force. But we got Mr. Amos then Mr. Schmidt with regards to the table.
This wasn't in regards to the table, Mayor. It's, for me, this was one of those things where your second term, you put together a task force, several task force, to try and get things accomplished for the city.
Well, also try to get input.
And for me, I, I, I see what we have here. I've read through the document. I don't really see anything wrong with it, but I also hear that even Councilman Schimpf himself is saying that there's five things that he needs to change on it. And then I hear Councilman Morrissey, who is on the task force, saying that he has sixty-some-odd things. So, for me, this is something that is very important, and I firmly believe and will support a table, not an indefinite table, but it's something that we need to give this task force the opportunity to get involved with. I heard you basically offer to Councilman Schimpf the opportunity to get on that task force. So, for me, it's, it's just, I can't at this point in time support this, I just can't.
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I would just say that, I guess I would defer to Councilman Schimpf, seeing as he's the one that took it upon himself to work on this. But I went through this document since I got it, and I've got notes on several things, but at the end of the day, all seven of us aren't going to agree on certain issues in here. And, and so I think it needs to be done publicly. Doing it in a work session or multiple work sessions is fine with me. My concern is, looking through this, and I don't know to what degree we're supposed to be governed by this, but there are, there are several examples in here where certain council members and mayors are not following these rules. And so, I don't know how long, you know, this has been going on, but it's been going on for the eleven years I've been here, I guess. So, I think we need to move it along, and so I would, I would defer to Councilman... And uh, so I would, I would defer to Councilman Schimpf and what would be his preference.
All right, so we have a, a motion to table. Um, so Madam Clerk?
Um, just to clarify, Mr. Morrissey, do you want, is your motion to table for the second week in July or the third week in July? That would be either the ninth or the sixteenth of July.
Well, first of all, uh, tabling is the wrong phrase. This is a motion to postpone until, and we can move it to July ninth. Uh, the only reason why I avoided July second was Fourth of July and Ninth also because Ninth is just following uh, that weekend which follows July fourth, which is on Wednesday. So there was consideration for that, and that's why I, I posed the sixteenth, but uh, I, I think we should move it uh, to uh, motion to, motion to postpone until the July ninth meeting of, of twenty-eighteen.
I got it. Sharon, are you okay with?
Yes, I am.
Let me, I got a question now. So um, if, so you said postpone during...
Yes, postpone.
During a, a timeframe of postpone, are we allowed to have work sessions on particular issues?
Well, that's, yes, totally.
I would say so.
Why not?
No, I just need to know because like, it's like when you, I just need to have some clarity on that, so that does not keep us from um, having work sessions to get this done and have a completion date.
Mr. Mayor? It also doesn't preclude us from having task force meetings as well.
That's fine. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
This is on to date to postpone?
The postpone table till July ninth.
Did the postpone get a second? I heard a second on the table.
I second.
No.
Mrs. Klein, no. Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, so the motion to table fails.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Schimpf, I believe, had the floor at this time.
Mr. Mayor, then I would like to, um...
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a point of order.
Okay.
And the point of order would be that uh, I would uh, in advance, let you know that I will start and I will be going through my list one at a time of my motions to amend. There'll be sixty-eight of them. And I will be doing that this evening.
Everyone will have a chance. Mr. Schimpf?
Um, Mr. Mayor, precisely what just happened, this document can help, help with that. Um, my first amendment that I would like to make is on um, line one point three, and that is interpretation, um, where it says the city attorney shall be considered the final authority. I move to strike considered the final authority and replace that with consulted. Do you want me to, do you want me to read all five of them, Kelly, or?
I want you to explain what you're talking about.
On one point three?
What you just said, the city council final, this is work session, city council final authority.
The, the city attorney shall be cons... It says the city attorney shall be considered the final authority on any questions regarding the application or interpretation of these rules. And I move to make that line read, the city attorney shall be consulted on any questions regarding the application or interpretation of these rules.
Who's, Mr. Mayor? May I ask, who's the final authority then?
Hold, hold on, he just made the motion. We don't have a second yet.
Well, oh, the, can he read all his amendments?
Mr. Schimpf, what, what page is that?
That's page number one, Mr. Morrissey. He can't just keep talking over everybody in this room?
Mr. Schimpf, can he make all of his, or he has to take them individually? For his amendments?
Honestly, it's up to, if it's what you want to do. It, it can go either way. It may be easier.
Seventy, seventy, eighty, I don't know, seventy-three. Um, light item, yeses, line item, no's.
Okay.
But...
So we don't, so then you want him to read all five?
But, Mr. Mayor, if you put them all together, then it's up or down?
We'll go, we'll go, um, go ahead with your, um...
No, do all five?
If you do them together, then they all win or they all lose.
Right, and I, I just assumed.
Let's go, number one. As amendment for a motion to add this to one point, whatever it is, you have it documented. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I still haven't had my question answered.
Mr. Morrissey, what's your vote, please? The question's been called. What's your vote, please?
That, that is a, a point of order. I need to be able to hear what I'm going to vote on, and I, I don't even have the page.
So it's on page one. The motion is to amend line one point three to strike it would, the motion would read as follows, "The city attorney shall be consulted on any question regarding the application or interpretation of these rules." It's on page one.
And the change would be the consult...
The consultation is the change.
The city attorney would no longer be the final authority.
So you voted no?
Yes.
And Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, how do we have a discussion on, and...
They don't want public discussion on this. They want to do this right now, so the same things that are criticized from others, it's happening right now. Number two.
Mr. Mayor, number two would be on two point two.
Hold on a second, I need to have time to capture the votes. Thank you. Okay, proceed, thank you.
Number two would be on two point two B. Um, and it says, "The mayor shall supervise and direct all city officers and departments." The mayor may, I move to strike the word "may" and then replace it with the word "shall."
Can you say that again, Councilman?
So, two point two B should read, according to my amendment, "The mayor shall supervise and direct all city officers and departments." "The mayor shall recommend the appointment of department heads with the approval of council." So you're replacing the word "may" with the word "shall."
And this is on the top of page two?
The top of page two, line two.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Uh, we, we don't, we don't have a second yet.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to Mr., or amendment to Mr. Schimpf's amendment. And that would be, at the end of the sentence, instead of approval, would be consent.
I'll second it. So that's a friendly amendment.
Mr. Morrissey, can you say that again?
It is an amendment to the amendment
Okay.
that Mr. Schimpf offered on this, and that is uh, striking the word approval on the second line and adding and replacing it with consent.
Okay.
So nothing to what he proposed earlier, just the shaking, changing of a word?
A word, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. It would be a word change, but a significant word change.
All right.
Do we want it read back, then?
No.
Okay. Okay, so the sentence would then read, if we take what Mr. Schimpf said, it would then read, "The mayor shall recommend the appointment of department heads with the consent of the council."
I second that.
He already, Jerome, Mr. Amos already did. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Klein?
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
My amendment has to be approved first before Mr. Schimpf's. I'm, I'm the second amendment that is allowed.
So, so you made an amendment to what he's proposed. So don't we read?
I made a second amendment to the main motion.
And the main motion was to change the word "may" to "shall" uh, for the...
Well, the main motion is the whole document, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so the friendly amendment to, uh, I got you. Uh, the friendly amendment to Mr. Schimpf is to change the word uh, in its entirety to um, consent instead of approval, and a friendly amendment. We vote on that. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, now we have the main motion on the floor from Mr. Schimpf.
Mr. Mayor, I moved to, I moved to take a two-minute recess so that we could, that we could speak for a moment.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
For what?
We're taking a, we're taking a two-minute, two-minute recess. Motion, that motion has been made with the second.
Okay.
And you, so are you in agreement?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Motion to reconvene?
Second. The motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are reconvening. It's your floor, uh, Mr. Schimpf.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as this rules of procedure goes, we are, um, I called a lot of different cities over the past two weeks that I had Dubuque, Cedar Falls, Cedar Rapids, they all sent me their copy of their um, rules and procedures. So I, I think it's pretty clear that the city does need this. Um, right now, I don't think it's appropriate that we go through all of these amendments here at the, at this time. So I will, after further consideration, move to um, table this until no later than July sixteenth, which would be after the, because Mr. Morrissey's motion for the ninth failed. So we can't do that one now. Correct?
Second.
So just a quick order, is postponement the same as table? So if we, if we postpone it, can we have work sessions and all those things legally versus postponing versus tabling?
You can definitely have work sessions ahead of, um, on an item before you vote on it.
Okay, all right, so point of, so do you have any questions regarding the table, Mr. Morrissey?
No, no, none whatsoever.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Thank you. Number ten, please. Mr. Jacobs? Or anyone, number ten.
Second. Okay, Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution directing the Waterloo Police Department to write municipal tickets where applicable.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Uh, Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this resolution is to really, um, for our police department to take credit for some of the work, bless you, or take credit for some of the work that they do um, as um, our city actually does fund, pay the bill for the officers, the equipment, the training. Um, and it turns out that a, a good number of the tickets that are written can be written, um, and the fee income from those tickets can either go to the state or the city. So if it's a non-indictable ticket, it could, it could come to the City of Waterloo. So it's a simple resolution to move, when possible, use a city code so the city, um, then would benefit for the, um, the price of that ticket to the police budget.
And I believe you've had conversation with um, Chief Trowka as well and done some conversation and vetting. Any objections to this, Chief, or?
Dan Trowka, chief of police, no.
All right, questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Juwan?
Yeah, this is just um, educational process for me. Why is this needed? Does, can't the, the city police write tickets right now? What's the difference? What does this do? I don't understand.
So let me further explain. So simply, um, and really just kind of looking at the budget time and, you know, we, we do write some tickets with the city code. I think in seventeen, uh, we realized about two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand in ticket revenue. Um, but a lot of tickets are written, written, just a simple speeding ticket would be written with a state code then, would then mean that the ticket revenue, not, number one, would be, the fine would be much higher. Uh, but secondly, that fine then would be paid to the state and not the City of Waterloo. So not all tickets can have a city code on them. Um, an indictable offense obviously goes to the state. But um, my opinion is, if we're the ones paying, if the taxpayers are the ones paying for the police officer, which do a great job for us, the vehicles, the equipment, the training for them, then when possible, um, the revenue generated from those tickets should go to the Waterloo police budget.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ju, yeah, Ms. Juwan, you're done?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I guess, yeah, just as a follow-up, I, I would have a curiosity, and I'm not sure who this is for, but given the budget discussions we've had over the last several years, I, I don't understand if this is something we could have been doing all this time, why we haven't been. Uh, I mean, did I miss something, or we've talked about looking under every rock? I mean, is this some new rule that's passed, or I, I just don't understand how this came about?
I think we, excuse me.
I was just going to say, I'd like some clarity, I guess.
I think, I think we've had the option, um, but this further goes to what Mr. Jacobs is saying by making sure that this is the direction that we take with some of these infractions. It also um, requires that we have to defend all of these too in case they go to court, which takes staff time. But there's a commitment, um, and they work together to kind of vet this as um, moving forward, so unless you got something else to add, Chief, we're it's going to take staff time.
On that too, also, Mr. Mayor, seems like we talked about something similar to this a couple of years ago. Matter of fact, I thought Chief Trowka brought it up, and I thought we were told that the state would not allow us because they kind of like that money.
Well, and there's many factors to consider. There are many pros and cons to both sides. The, uh, Councilman Jacobs and I had a spirited discussion, especially on my part, that was productive. And that's the way things should be accomplished. Uh, the more tickets we write under city tickets, the more time it's going to take the city prosecutor to prosecute them. If we write a state ticket, a county prosecutor would prosecute them. And that falls under county taxes with some assistance from the state and funds. Uh, many pros and cons, and then this comes into discretionary issues as well. The state legislature and the courts take a dim view in getting involved in the discretion of officers uh, or forcing their officers to take one action or another. The only mandatory arrest policy we have is in that of domestic violence cases. And even there, there's wiggle room. As serious as drunk driving is, the state or no other, the, the courts or the legislature does not force officers to, to arrest drunk drivers if they come across them. They still allow discretion because circumstances always vary, vary. However, I support this in spirit, as I told Mr. Jacobs, because uh, uh, you know, we are, we have our automatic traffic enforcement program that the council has supported. And uh, we're realizing safety and revenue... uh, we're realizing safety and revenue from that here in our community. The recent court decision, uh, from the Iowa Supreme Court was very, it was literal and it was symbolic. They basically let the DOT know that they were engaging in overreach, and we as a city, all cities in Iowa, know what's best for our city, and let us take care of our business. Uh, could I enforce this resolution? I, it would probably be difficult for me to discipline an officer if they didn't do this, because we also realize some benefits from funding for our department, like we get fifty thousand dollars a year in, uh, funding for the government's Sa- Traffic Safety Bureau. However, this, uh, this is the right thing to do, and I, uh, we're gonna move toward the goal of doing this.
Thank you.
Alright, other questions? Mister Amos?
Yeah, Chief, um, Mister Mayor, um, one of the questions that I have, and it's a concern, is we are going to take a revenue, and I still haven't heard how much that actually is, and I think we need to know that number, but we're going to take money that we have been giving, sending to the state, and we're going to hold that money back. And, I guess, Chief, are there ramifications behind that, from a standpoint of us keeping these funds instead of sending them to the state?
Well, the only one I can think of off the top of my head is, I ask myself, is there the potential for us to jeopardize that fifty thousand dollars in funding we get for enforcing some of our traffic laws? The government's, uh, Traffic Safety Bureau, are they gonna take a dim view in this? Uh, I don't have an answer for that.
Is there any way to get an answer?
Find out how it works for you.
And lose the money.
Well, I don't, I don't, you know, that would be the chief calling the, the DOT and say, "Hey, uh, we're gonna prosecute our own, uh, infractions, you know, what are you gonna do about it?" So I don't, I don't know if you've heard anything from other, uh, communities that may have done it, but I think we may be in uncharted territory almost.
We may be, and it may be time for us to revisit-
Oh, Mister Morrissey.
Uh, our ordinance that I introduced in the past, two or three years ago, where the DOT stepped in and said, "No, you can't do that." So, uh, uh, I do plan on looking that, at that again.
Alright, Mister Morrissey, uh, Mister Amos, are you done? Mister Morrissey?
Mister, Mister Mayor, I'm just wondering what kind of tickets this applies to?
Right, so what are we, what are we talking about, or do you-
Good, good question, and the best way for me to explain it is typically, uh, like a speeding ticket. Uh, drunk driving is an indictable offense, so it would not apply to that, because the county attorney, typically with drunk drivers, there's more than one violation involved. We may stop the person for speeding, then it becomes a drunk driving, so the county prosecutor, for prosecutable, uh, simplicity, wants us to write that speeding ticket in the state court, as well as the indictable offense, which is the drunk driving. Uh, there are also some violations that apparently we not, we haven't adopted, from what the officers are telling me. Uh, we'll need to look at that and bring those forward to the city council and adopt them, so that they could be covered under this.
So, so, you know-
Mister, Mister Mayor, I just, I'm just wondering, I, I mean, I question if the state code even allows us to do this, if there's some kind of restriction that is on it, especially when we talk about preemption, uh, that the city, no cities are allowed to make, uh, any kind of, of ordinance or rule that is lesser than what the state has set up? And is that not app, applicable here?
Well, that would kinda be like the fireworks ordinance. I mean, we tell what we want to do with regards to launching them, but is, is, I guess, for the record-
But, but Mister Mayor-
Let me finish, let me finish, Mister Morrissey.
Oh, okay, okay.
I guess for the, for the, the question, is this legal to be able to do this?
I'm not aware of any specific code that, code that makes it illegal.
Okay.
I can speak to it a little bit, too. A lot of our traffic codes mimic state code, they're the exact same wording, they copy the same kind of wording, sections, et cetera, so there's no legal ramifications for doing this resolution, you're simply picking which section of code you decide to write it under. If it's state, it's, has the same kind of violation, if it's municipal, it has the same kind of violation as well.
Alright, thank you. Mister, Mister Morrissey still has his floor.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, my, my next question is, um, the, the wording in section one, uh, Councilman Jacobs, is that the Waterloo, the Waterloo Police Department, or Mister Mayor, excuse me, directing it to you, Mister Mayor, uh, says that the Waterloo Police Department is hereby directed by the city council to issue tickets as municipal violations unless an indictable offense. That's pretty, um, strict and stringent, um, and are we not putting police officers i- at jeopardy of some type of, of, um, consequence, uh, job-related, by not following this dictate from the city council? And, y- you know, if we're gonna approve this, I believe that that word "directed" should be changed to something like "is hereby encouraged by the city council," rather than the city council dictating to the police department, um, what they're to do jeopardizing, uh, job performance and job evaluations.
So is there, um, a, so is, is there something in place whereby not, um, they don't do this? Um, is there something in place, does this, his, does his, um, question or word usage limit what we're talking about doing? I'm talking about Mister Morrissey's to Mister Jacobs', um, resolution.
Mister Morrissey does bring up a good point, here's my take on it. If, if an officer doesn't follow this, and I try to discipline that officer, it probably would not withstand judicial scrutiny. That is, that discipline probably would not withstand judicial scrutiny, because we are not allowed to impart too heavily upon discretion. However, I can strongly encourage that the officers take these actions.
Okay, alright.
With that, Mister Mayor, with what the chief has said there-
Chief, you might as well stay up there.
-thank you, Chief Trowka, is, could, could I, uh, ask Councilman Jacobs if he would, uh, make a friendly or agree to a friendly amendment to change the word "directed" to "encouraged"?
Mister Mayor, is a, a friendly agreement, is that a, a real thing? Is that a legal term in this chamber? I've never heard of a friendly agreement before, to be honest with you.
But if, a friendly amendment, um, we may, we have amendments to motions.
Okay, so Mister Mayor-
So, he could ask if you would amend it.
Alright, so Mister Morrissey, what word would please you?
I just gave you a Councilman Jacobs.
What word, what word, Pat, uh, Mister, Mister Morrissey, he, he's asking to maybe find an area of compromise, what, what word, what word are you looking for again, so Kelly can record it?
I, Mister Mayor, I, I believe that, uh, the sentence would, uh, be better suited if it stated, "The Waterloo Police Department is hereby encouraged by the city council to issue tickets as municipal violations," uh, and the rest of the sentence, and I'd like to make that amendment.
And so, you, if he-
I'd like to make a motion for that amendment.
So, and you would support that if, so you gotta, so-
So now we've got a motion and a second to strike the word "direct" in section one for the word "encouraged."
Yes.
Okay.
And you would support, if this is approved, you would support Councilman Jacobs in this?
Yes.
I would-
About the amendment, I'm sorry.
About the amendment? Okay, we're having a little discussion about that amendment, I like the word "directed", it just gives a little more oomph to it.
Okay.
A little more gravitas.
Mister Mayor?
Directed.
My concern is that we haven't checked with DOT, we don't know if this is gonna be acceptable, and therefore encouraged, would allow us to still do, perform in this manner without being in direct opposition to the, the state.
Mister Mayor?
So, we have, Mrs. Klein?
Yeah, um, I, I'm looking at this like this, this is our city, it's our police, it's our ticket books, it's our squad cars, these are not involving the county in any way, so every action pertaining to these tickets is Waterloo's action. We should get the money, and here's the other part of it, this is a reverse backfill. We've been giving all this money to the state, let's withhold it.
How much money are we talking about? I'm sorry.
Okay, so you're done with the floor?
I'm done with it.
Um, so-
My question is how much money?
So, right now, we're doing "directed" and "encouraged," um, as that's on here. After that's up or down, then we can come back and talk about potential, uh, revenues. So, Madam Clerk, um, the amendment to-
Mister Schmidt?
This is to change the wording, correct?
Yep. Do you guys want me to read it again?
Uh, I don't need to.
Okay.
It's "directed" or "encouraged." I would, I would vote no.
Okay. Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mister Jacobs?
No.
Mister Morrissey?
Yes.
Mister Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Alright, so now we have that, um, Councilwoman Juwan has a question.
My question is how much money we're talking about, and is it enough to jeopardize the fifty thousand that we get from the state?
I'm trying to recall the numbers, I think last year, uh, a hundred thousand dollars in city citations were written, and I believe it was around four hundred thousand in state citations were written.
That all of those could've been city?
No, uh, because some of those were indictable offenses, and it's difficult for us to track what's what, once it goes over to the county for prosecution.
And that's why it has "where applicable," so there can be some type of discretion, uh, given to the enforcing officer, so that kinda-
That's fine.
Alright, so we have, um, the resolution on the floor, um, and the word "direct," so can we have a direct vote? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
No, because I don't think we've done all of our homework.
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
Mister Morrissey?
No.
Mister Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
No.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, could someone take eleven and twelve, please?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, number eleven, I move to make a resolution approving Blackheart County Gaming Association grant application in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty thousand for the landslide improvements in the airline passenger terminal. Number twelve, I move to make a resolution approving a purchase agreement with EasyDoc Inc. of Monay, Missouri, in the amount of forty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, seventy cents, plus shipping in an amount not to exceed twenty-one hundred dollars in conjunction with docks being placed at the boathouse, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
That motion, second, has been made with the second. Um, questions, council, or anyone? Madam Clerk? Yes, sir.
Oh, just real quick, what, what does NTE mean? What does that mean on?
Not to exceed.
Not, not to ex- Okay, that's what it was.
Um, so, alright, Madam Clerk?
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
Mister Morrissey?
Yes.
Mister Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Thirteen and fourteen.
Mister Mayor? Mister Amos? Like to make a motion adopting a resolution directing the advertisement for the sale of, what is, ten million, five-hundred-and-five thousand general obligation bonds, series two thousand and eighteen E., setting sale date as May twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and approving electronic bidding procedures and distribution of preliminary official statement for the sale. You want me to do fourteen and fifteen also, Mayor?
Uh, you did thirteen and fourteen?
I haven't done fourteen yet. Number fourteen is a resolution directing the advertisement for the sale of a million and seventy thousand dollar general taxable obligation bond, series twenty eighteen B., setting sale date as May twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and approving electronic bidding procedures and the distribution of the preliminary official statement for the sale.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mister Morrissey?
Yes.
Mister Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution, number fifteen, resolution approving supplemental agreement number one with Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in an amount of five thousand, one hundred, fifty dollars for additional engineering services related to the Brock third edition preliminary plat, final plat and sanitary sewer extension, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number sixteen, resolution approving agreement for mitigation of utility facility conflicts with Unite Private Networks LLC for services related to the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, University Avenue Reconstruction Phase One, Green Hill Road to Evergreen Avenue, contract number nine-three-three, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Number seventeen, motion approving final quantity summary for a net increase of seven-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and twenty-two cents for the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen permeable alley project, contract number nine oh five, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Alright, the motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mister Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
Mister Morrissey?
Yeah.
Alright, alright, thank you. Uh, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, please.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, number eighteen, I move to make a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Mike Dolan Concrete and Masonry, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, at a total cost of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, seventy-two dollars, seventy-two cents, seventy-one dollars, seventy-two cents, for the FY two thousand and sixteen permeable alley project, contract number nine zero five, receive and file two-year maintenance bond. Number nineteen, I move to make a resolution approving professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in conjunction with the Dry Run Creek Arch Culvert Review, and authorize the mayor to execute said documents. Number twenty, I move to make a resolution approving award of contract to Layman Trucking and Excavating LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars, and approve contract bond and certificate of insurance for demolition and site clearance services at eight oh seven and eight oh nine dash eight eleven East Fourth Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. Alright, motion's been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
Mister Morrissey?
Yo.
And Mister Schimpf?
Yes.
Alright, number twenty-one. Mister Schimpf, did I hurt you?
Mister Mayor, uh, number twenty-one, I'm moved to make a motion to receive, file, considering pass for the first time, and ordinance amending the two thousand and eight traffic code, section five forty, obedience to official traffic control devices by adding subsection fifty-eight A. Dubuque Road and Osage Road, full actuated.
Second. The motion's been made with the second. Um, questions about this? Madam Clerk?
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
Mister Morrissey?
Yes.
Mister Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Motion's been made with the second. Sandy, um, timeliness, is public safety, or is anything involved that we need to do this right now?
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director, uh, the signals are flashing at this time, but, um, they won't be put into operation until the railroad does their preemption, and that's what we're waiting for. So it could be the end of May or beginning of June by the time the railroad is done, so we can hook up.
Okay, alright, thank you. Madam clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. We'll pick that back up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn to executive session. That's all I gotta say, right?
Yep.
Second.
Alright, uh, we are journeying to executive session for the acquisition of property based upon Iowa Code twenty-one-point-five-one J, two-thousand-and-seventeen. Uh, Mr. Zellafer, are we doing this correctly?
We are.
Alright, oh, I read your part. Alright, uh, roll call vote?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. We're journeying executive session.